Okay, it is four o'clock. I will call the December fourteenth Salinas City Commission meeting to order. I would first ask staff for confirmation of the Kansas Open Meetings Act required notice has been properly provided. Yes, thank you. With that, we will have the call.
Mayor Hoppit?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Frans?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Brennan?
Here.
Thank you. With that, I would ask that we have a moment of silence. And that asks that we do keep the officer that was involved in the incident over the weekend, him and his family in our thoughts. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have no awards and proclamations. That will lead us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for individuals that would like to address the commission on something that is not on the agenda. We ask that you please give your name and where you're from and limit your comments to five minutes. And I will ask Deputy City Manager Jacob Woods to tell everybody how they can raise their hand and get on.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I've got just a real quick presentation I'll take us through here that kind of outlines how this works. So this is the screen that you should see if you are in Zoom right now. You should see something like this. At the bottom of the screen, there's a tab here that says Participants. If you click on that button, it will bring up the participant box. And then at the bottom right of that, you should see it might say Raise Your Hand right here, or it might have three little dots. If you click on those dots, that will bring up the option to raise hand. Once you do that, you'll see a screen that has the hand raised like this one. If you're not able to make that work, you can click on the chat function. The chat will allow you to chat with just me. And that's not a place where I'm going to answer questions or back and forth, but it is a place where you can get my attention if you would like to speak. The chat box will pop up there and you can just type your message. And that will go directly to me and we will make sure that you can figure out a way to speak. Once I have given you opportunity to speak or it's your turn, I will unmute you and there a box like this should pop up on your screen that says unmute. Click that and the floor will be yours. So once you're done speaking, I will go ahead and mute you again and you'll get a message that just says that the host has muted you. So that's just kind of the quick down and dirty as far as how you can request to share. So if anybody at this point would like to speak, you can use the Raise Your Hand function or send me a chat. Or if you have a camera and you just want to wave at me, that's another way to make this work. So I'll give everybody a second here to test out the functionality there. I don't see any hands raised at this point and it doesn't look like anybody's waving at me. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I think we can move on.
Okay. With that, we will move to public hearings and item schedule for a certain time.
Item 5.1, Public Hearing of the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund for Improvements to the Wastewater Treatment Plant. 5.1A Resolution Number 20-7895, authorizing the filing of application with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for a loan under the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund Act.
Okay, with that, I will open up the public hearing and I will turn it over to Martha Tasker at this time. Is Martha there?
It looks like she, there we go, she's unmuted now. Oh, she's muted again.
Hello, this is Martha, can you hear me?
Yes, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Today, we're here for a public hearing for the wastewater treatment plan improvement project. And Jacob, are you going to attract any public participants for me? Okay, so the city has applied for a preliminary application to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for a Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Loan Fund to finance improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. And as a part of that loan, we're required to hold a public meeting and a public hearing. The public meeting was held on October 19th, 2020. And so Jacob, could you advance the slides? Okay, thank you. So the agenda for today is to talk about a project overview and talk about the 2020 NPDES permit, which stands for National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit. And the end result of that is it defines our effluent limitations from our wastewater treatment plant to the Smoky Hill River and provides a schedule of when we may need to make some improvements to meet all their requirements. Talk briefly about a wastewater treatment plant feasibility study. It included some alternatives that were evaluated. They were evaluated on a very high planning level to develop some general costs to get a feel for the different alternatives. Then we'll talk about the preferred alternative. Ultimately, we'll get to a total estimated construction cost and a total project cost, which will be the dollar figure in our loan amount. Talk about the schedule of compliance. As a part of our loan, we're required to do an environmental review clearance and get comments from 11 different agencies. We'll talk about financing options and at the end, we'll discuss the impacts on our sewer user charge and debt service. Next slide, please. And Jacob, with this one, you can just keep tapping and it'll bring on the years of construction. So really, over the last 95 years, we've had multiple improvements at our wastewater treatment plant. The first wastewater treatment plant was cited out at this very same location in 1926. And as you can see, as Jacob's popping on the different years, been multiple improvements over the last 95 years. The last major improvement was in 1993. Next slide, please. And currently, our wastewater treatment plant is located out at 596 North Marymount Road, out on the very northeast side of the city, north of the railroad tracks, east of the flood control levee dike, just to give you a general look. And as you saw earlier, it was first constructed there in 1926. Today, our current rated capacity is 7.25 million gallons per day. The last major upgrade was in 1993, which we added activated sludge to remove ammonia and to enhance BOD removal. It included some ultraviolet disinfection to disinfect the treated wastewater as it enters, that enters the river. And also final aeration to add some dissolved oxygen back into the water. It's been in 30 years of service. That's a long time for a wastewater treatment plant. Typically, they're designed for 20 years of life. We've held off on doing some equipment replacements at the project at the plant site over the last five years, just basically waiting for this wastewater treatment plant improvement project to move forward. So we have a good feel for exactly what we're building and know what's going to be a part of the project. We really didn't want to put money into structures or equipment that might not have a long-term life for us. Next slide, please. So really, what we have going on is our 2020 NPDS permit is requiring biological nutrient removal. And this really isn't new news because we've been talking about it since 2005. And we get permits on five-year cycles. So we get a permit 2005, 2010, 2015, and now the current permit we're operating under is 2020. In all of those years, in 2005, KDHE required us to conduct a study and try to come up with an overall cost that it might take to upgrade for nutrient removal. The intent then was to get a feel for what it might take to do that all across Kansas, the number of dollars. In 2010, KDHE hired Fort Scott Community College to do a nutrient removal study. In 2018, KDHE hired Wichita State to look at chemical removal for the wastewater treatment plant. So we've been talking about doing some kind of nutrient removal out there for at least the last 15 years. But our current permit, what's driving us to do our job today is total nitrogen of less than 10 milligrams per liter and total phosphorus of one milligram per liter is a requirement. And ultimately, what's going to be the limit is in pounds per day. For nitrate, nitrite, or nitrogen, 606 pounds per day. And for phosphorus, 60.6 pounds per day are going to be the limits. And those are over an annual average period. So that's really what's going to drive our project that we're talking about for improvements. And unfortunately, our wastewater treatment plant was not designed for nutrient removal. Next slide, please. In addition, our current wastewater permit has more stringent ammonia requirements. What you see here is what we had for daily maximum and monthly averages back between 2015 and 2020. What you'll notice in the summer months, the ammonia requirement numbers are driven down. So much more additional treatment there and paying very close attention to the process to meet those numbers as temperatures go up. The toxicity of the ammonia to the aquatic life enhances. So that's another component of what we have to do with our project. So next slide, please. The draft final wastewater treatment plant feasibility study evaluated several different options. Kind of in a nutshell, it was three different treatment processes. One, conventional three-stage, similar to what we have, an integrated fixed film activated sludge would be where you'd add some type of media that either was flowed or fixed in your basins or a membrane that was in your basin. And with each one of these, we looked at whether they be with primary clarifiers or without primary clarifiers and would we be looking at biological nutrient removal or phosphorus nutrient removal. So you can see with this combination of slate here, that's where it really became important to decide, are you still there, Jacob? I think you slipped a slide on me. Okay, thank you. And so you can see we're installing different pieces of treatment, may or may not have stayed in the picture for the long run. But our final wastewater treatment plant feasibility study had a preferred alternative of a conventional three-stage reactor with primary clarifiers and biological phosphorus removal was what came out of the feasibility study. The next slide, please. And the gist for this feasibility study was really to try to get a handle on what are the costs for upgrading the wastewater treatment plant, just to kind of check back and make sure what we're looking at for overall costs and looking at our debt service is still accurate from what we've been doing over the last few years. And this table here really looks at the 2016 costs in the feasibility study and then some inflationary factors to bring it up to 2020 costs. So in a nutshell, the 2021 costs, we're looking at about 25.5 million for construction. And that included a 4% inflation rate for the last five years. We changed the contingency from 30 to 35%, really because we're just not sure what the potential market impacts are from COVID and all the other natural disasters that have occurred around the world and United States. Next slide, please. So really, what we're trying to get to is total estimated costs. And so on this slide, I'm just going to look at 2021. So we brought over the 25.5 million. Currently, we have an agreement with HDR Engineering for Owners Rep Services for slightly under a million dollars. We're estimating the design build engineering cost to carry through to the December 31st, 2024 to be roughly 5 million. And so that brought our total loan to 31.5 million. And as we move through this process and we get the project more defined, obviously, the city and the design build teams will be developing much more detailed cost estimates as we go forward. Next slide, please. This is just a quick project schedule that's out of the NPDS permit. Basis of Design Report is due to KDHE on April 30th, 2021. And I'm calling that the roadmap. It's going to define what we're, what the basic project we're moving forward with. And that has to be approved by KDHE, Kansas Department of Health and Environment before we can move forward. We're looking at then 60% plans, January 29th, 2022, and ultimately 90% documents that we can develop a guaranteed maximum price, April of 2022, and begin construction in May of 2022. We have a two-year construction cycle through May of 2024. And then the remainder of 2024 will be fine tuning and operating the plant with the ultimate desire and need to meet the NPDS permit compliance on December 31st of 2024. So basically, what you see here is about a five-year timeframe from when we first get our permit to where we're required to meet the goal of the NPDS permit. Next slide, please. As a part of the loan requirements, we have to send our project to 11 agencies. We received their responses back by November 30th, 2020. 10 responses were received, no objections to the project. We learned that the Kansas Biological Survey do not make these reviews anymore. The Kansas Water Office asked for us to update the 2013 Water Conservation Plant, which is already on our to-do list, which we'll have to do as a result of bringing the South Water Treatment Plant and Well Field online. Next slide, please. So the important part is financing. We looked at option one was conventional financing. Principle of our loan was 31.5 million, interest rate of 3%. Interest over the life of that was 10,846,000. Our annual payment would be approximately 2.2210,000. Our second option was looking at the loan through KDHE. Again, 31.5 million, interest rate of 1.29. Interest over the life of the loan, 20 years, was 4,439,664 dollars, annual payment of 1,800,000. So obviously, option two with the KDHE low-interest loan is our best alternative. We save about 6,400,000 in interest, which is annually 320,000 per year. The loan is included in our 2021 through 2025 water rate study. And the annual payment is also in there at a rate of 1.29%. Next slide, please. I won't go into too much detail here, but basically, this shows the rates for sewer user charges and debt service based on our discussion of where we're looking at today on wastewater rates, a 2% increase for the next five years. Excuse me, the customer charge for currently in 2021 is $8.36. For 2020 is 8.36, and 2021, it'll be $8.53. The consumption charge per thousand gallons is $5.90 in 2020. That'll increase to $6.02. So roughly about a dollar a month per year for the average wastewater user of the 8,000 gallons. The debt service is included in our water rate structure. The first two years are in at 135,000 for interest and then 1.8 million in payments for the next 20 years. Next slide, please. And so basically, at this point, come to the end of my public hearing presentation, turn it back to the governing body for questions, public comment, closing of the hearing, and then ultimately, City Commission action.
Okay, questions or comments from the commission for Ms. Tasker? If not, I have one. The interest rate and the loan amount, is that a rate we will be locking in here before long? The 1.29%? Hello?
I can hear you.
What did you say?
All right, for some reason, I see muted and there seems to be a delay between, yes, that was last month's rate. And the hope is, once we send these documents in, we'll get locked into that in the next few weeks. So that's the whole goal of kind of moving this forward.
Yeah, and we lock that in and then it does, it works as a construction loan, looking at your interest amount. We're only going to pay based on what we're borrowing and we will borrow over the next several years?
Well, probably for the two years of construction, then ultimately, when construction's done, we'll go to paying back the principal and such, if that makes sense to you.
But do we borrow the?
We just get reimbursed for the dollars we've spent as we move forward. We start out with 31.5 million.
Right, that's.
I think that was the question.
Okay.
Just to clarify, this is Commissioner Frans. Just to clarify, what we pay interest on during the construction is the money we've already drawn down, not the full amount of the loan.
That is correct, yes. Just the money as we use it.
Yeah, that's a little different than a bond issue where you sell a bond and you pay the interest on the whole bunch. This is as we use it. Okay, thank you.
I love the interest rate, I just didn't want to be paying interest on money we weren't using yet, so.
No, that's the beauty of this loan. It's pay, you send in your request for reimbursement and that's what they charge interest on. It's a nice, nice interest rate right now.
Any other commissioners, questions, or comments? If not, Mr. Wood, I would ask if there's any participants that would like to comment on this?
If you're in the public and you would like to comment, if you'd raise your hand or wave at me. I don't see any at this point. We'll give you a couple of seconds here. That doesn't look like there's anybody that is requesting to speak.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. And I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor moved adoption of Resolution 20-7895. I'll stop there.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 20-7895, authorizing the filing of application with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for a loan under the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund Act. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Ms. Tasker. That will bring us to consent agenda item.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of December 7th, 2020. Item 6.2, approve Resolution Number 20-793, accepting the 2020 Salina Williams Bank surveillance report. And item 6.3, approve Resolution Number 20-7920, authorizing the city manager to renew an agreement for life insurance benefits of net life.
I would ask the commission if there is any items that would like to be removed from the consent agenda? Not hearing any, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moving, we approve the consent agenda as presented, 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3.
Okay, got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, item 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That also passes 5-0. That will lead us to administration.
Item 7.1, Resolution Number 20-7914, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Overland Contracting Incorporated for Phase 1A of the wastewater treatment plant improvement project, project number 20028.
All right, Ms. Tasker, you're back on. Are you unmuted?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I believe I'm unmuted.
Yep, we can hear you.
All right, Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. This wastewater treatment plant project for nutrient removal's been a topic, as we previously mentioned, for the last 15 years. And currently, we're to a point where we have a NPDS permit for 2020, or National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit, requiring us to meet some nutrient removal requirements by the end of year 2024. So going to try to just hit the highlights of this process and hopefully then leave room for some questions at the end. I do have some people from OCI or Overland Contracting Incorporated and HDR that'll be on the line and can help with questions as we move forward and get towards the end. So basically, this project, originally, we looked at a feasibility study and we did follow the purchasing policy to where we went out for a request for qualifications and got the project underway. And at that time, we had eight different consultants that submitted for the project and four were interviewed. And ultimately, HDR was selected to do the feasibility study and we've basically kind of been following through the project with them. We started with, in December, with our final and draft permits coming to us from KDHE with our requirements for nutrient removal and a compliance schedule. And so basically, in December, we really started hitting this project pretty hard. We met with the City Commission and got authorization to move forward with the progressive design build project and also to move forward with HDR as our owner's representative. So that happened in the middle of December. Then after the first of the year, we were working with HDR to develop our contract. And then COVID came in March, COVID-19. And in April, the City Commission delayed the wastewater treatment plan improvement project for 90 days, which made good sense at the time because we really couldn't have individuals visiting our treatment plant and taking a look at it and trying to put together the proposal. So we had a 90-day delay there. So we went back to KDHE and ultimately got a revised schedule. The end result is, we still are meeting our current permit, 2020 permit from KDHE at the end. the end of December 2024. So that's, that's our long-term requirement. And so talk a little bit about the steps that we've taken during the course of our project. We did get, in July, we were able to get an agreement with HDR for owner's rep services approved. We also sent out qualifications to, to request design build teams that might be interested in our project or wastewater treatment plant improvements. In August, we had two design build teams that submitted their qualifications, Overland Contracting Incorporated, which is a Black and Beach company, and they were in association with Walters and Morgan Construction and Berns and McDonnell Engineering Company and CAS Contractors. Both teams were very good teams. We have a, a selection committee that was made up of four team members, one from HDR and three city staff. We notified both of the design build teams that, to submit proposals for the wastewater treatment plant improvement project. In September of 2020, we held confidential meetings, we received proposals from the teams and we did interviews in September with both of the teams. So September was a busy month, trying to kind of pick up the pace and catch up from our 90-day delay. The process we're following falls within our purchasing policy, so we used formal scoring process to evaluate each of the design build teams. We looked at their experience and capabilities, who's the key personnel, how many active projects, what's their project approach, how well did they communicate with this project insight, and also what was their execution plan and their overall management? So at the end of September, the selection committee really felt that Overland Contracting Incorporated or, which is a Black and Beach company with Walters and Morgan, really presented the best proposal. Black and Beach has designed 70 design build projects in the last 15 years. Walters and Morgan has 30 years of experience going back with the city over the past 15 years. Both had multiple Kansas projects and we just really thought they understood our project, had insight and a strong execution plan and some solutions for us to move forward. So in October, the selection committee presented in study session our, our thoughts on the design build team and then also the ability to negotiate an agreement for the phase one part of the project, which basically we chose to break that into two, two phases or two parts of a phase one, because we wanted to get a good handle on the type of project we were going to build before we developed all the design fees for the entire phase one project. And so the city commission agreed with OCI or Overland Contracting Incorporated as a design build team and gave us the authority to go and try to negotiate an agreement with Overland Contracting, which, which we've accomplished to date and that, that agreement's in your packet. And again, what we're doing here with the wastewater improvement project is very similar to what we did out at the South Water Treatment Plant. Progressive design build, broken the project into two phases, with the first phase being developing the 90-degree design documents, ultimately to get to a guaranteed maximum price to go forward with phase two of the construction. The difference here is we broke phase one into two alternatives. We'd like to get through the basis of design report, get it approved by KDHE, have our roadmap in place. So we know truly what we'd be designing around and developing a cost for, so that we can hone in on those engineering fees and then ultimately get to the max 90% design documents guaranteed maximum price and move it into phase two, which basically takes the project for construction, startup, commissioning, testing of the facility, O and M manuals, and really all the way through till the end of December 31st of 2024. The agreement that's in your packet to, for review there is based on the Design Build Institute of America. And this is a very similar agreement that we use for the South Water Treatment Plant. We've modified it slightly for this specific project. The design build team and their legal counsel, HDR staff and their legal counsel, city staff, and our legal counsel and risk manager have all reviewed the completed document and associated exhibits and so it's been over a lot of review over the last couple of months, so we've put that into place there for your consideration. But let's kind of just talk briefly about the agreement to give you a little bit of a heads up. The scope of services is in Exhibit C. And it really defines the work that we'll be doing over this in Phase 1A. More specific, there's five main tasks. Task one is kind of a kickoff meeting that we're proposing in the near future, assuming how we move forward with this contract. Another step is the alternative analysis and basically we're going to model our wastewater treatment plant, look at our influent flow and determine how can we stabilize that. All of the flow to our wastewater plant is pumped in there, so it varies greatly over the day, which creates some real design challenges. We'll be looking at phosphorus and our process and then carbon for a food source. Another task that's pretty important is the existing facilities condition. Out of that, we'll develop that equipment replacement list that we need. The basis of design report is includes surveying, geotechnical work at the site to determine the soil conditions. Out of that, we'll develop our roadmap or the basis of design report and develop some cost modeling that's current for the level of design we have done at that part and project management. The overall contract price is defined in Exhibit D and there it's broke down in hours per task and individuals to work on each task. The, the ultimate answer is it's a not to exceed amount of $897,193. And the bulk of the work falls under the alternative analysis, condition assessment and the base of design report. And as I say, Exhibit D really identifies those hourly components. The interim project milestones are defined in Exhibit E and they match up well with the 2020 NPDS permit compliance schedule. The basis of design reports due in April of 2021, 30% documents with another project budgets due in September 30th of 2021. 60% plans and specs will go to KDHE for review and approval. The 90% documents will develop cost estimates, so for the project. So as you see, each level that we move forward, the costs become more definitive. And again, we're still looking at beginning construction in May of 2022 for two years through May of 2024. And then testing and getting the, the process functioning well by the end of December 31st, 2024. So basically, we're looking at about a five-year project here from when we received our permit till we're up and running and meeting, meeting the goal of the permit. As a physical note, the guaranteed maximum price is really not determined until we get to that 90%. The 2021 through 2025 capital improvement program includes 1.85 million for engineering services in 2020 and 29.65 million in 2021 for construction and engineering. The source of funding for this project, as we mentioned earlier, is the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Loan Fund. It's a low-interest loan for 31.5 million. We've included that in our current water and sewer rate study for 2021 through 2025. The first two years for 2021 and 2022 are $135,000 for interest payments and then ultimately 1.8 million for the loan repayment from year 2023 for the next 20 years. Again, our interest rate's 1.29%. Identified three options for the city commission. Option one is to adopt resolution 20-794, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Overland Contracting Incorporated for Phase 1 of the wastewater treatment plant improvement project, project number 20028. The second option would be to postpone consideration of the resolution and provide staff further direction. Option three would be to vote to deny the resolution, which would result in the city not meeting the 2020 NPDS permit compliance schedule. Staff recommends option one. And again, I do believe I'm, hopefully I'm looking for names here to see if I have some individuals on from HDR or Black and Beach that we could, as a group, answer questions. And I know Aaron Martin was our legal counsel and he is out of town, but I think he's clued Greg into this particular project, so we would all make an effort to answer your questions.
Mayor.
Open it up, oh, go ahead.
Mayor, this is Greg Bingston, legal counsel. Just wanted to remind everyone of the advisability of identifying him or herself before speaking and that it probably would be best to go to roll call votes on any votes for the balance of the meeting. That's according to the Attorney General's guidance.
Do we have any commissioners with questions? This is Mayor Hoppick, do we have any questions or comments from the commissioners? I have one quick one, Ms. Tasker. I know we won't have a guaranteed maximum price, but as far as coming up with the 31 million 500,000, how was that figure? And again, I know that we had a 2016 figure, we used an inflationary number for that, but how did we come up with those numbers for the wastewater treatment plan?
For the, I want to make sure I understand your question, Mayor Hoppick. For, to get to the total of 31.5 million?
Yes.
Basically, we pulled that from our feasibility study and we inflated the cost from the 2016 numbers up to 2021 numbers at four, at over the five, over the five-year time period, was having trouble getting that said, and developed this new cost estimate. And basically between KDHE and I, I, we looked at about 31.5 potentially. One thing to keep in mind, if our project does not equal that total amount, then we don't borrow that amount of money at the end for the project. So it's our, our best guess for where we're at today for the overall cost.
So Mayor Hoppick here, so we use the state to help us come up with that number, is that what you're saying?
Yes, we talked with them and they actually suggested, I think originally I had 30 million and they thought with the situation and the, all of the costs and being five years down the road, that we should be probably in the 31.5 and that's what they offered as the loan amount to me. So I guess in combination of each other, we, we agreed with that number, knowing we, if we don't use it, then that's, we don't borrow that amount of money, it's set in play at the end. And again, we could have some dollars from our reserve fund to cover part of that cost. I don't know if I got to your question there.
Yeah, that helped, I was just trying to figure out who helped come up with that number.
Well, and, and I, I tried to not repeat everything that I did in the public hearing earlier, but basically that had the specifics from the feasibility study that we used to develop these numbers. And then we're at a fairly high planning level because there's really not a lot of engineering that we put into play. It's looking at rule of thumb and, and costs like that at this point.
Okay, if there are no comments or questions from commissioners, I would ask if there's any comments from the public.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission, this is Mayor Hoppick, bring it back to commission for action.
Commissioner Ryan here, Mayor, I move we adopt resolution number 207914, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Overland Contracting, Inc. for Phase 1 of the wastewater treatment plan improvement project, number 20028.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have a motion, a second, and I'm going to ask, Shandy, are you there? Do you want to do the roll call or do you want me to?
I can.
Okay.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Ms. Tasker. That will lead us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, resolution number 20-7922, approving a support letter for the Slina Housing Authority's participation in the Kansas, in the Department of Housing and Urban Development, Section 18 and RED conversion program.
Okay, Ms. Driscoll, are you available?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm going to give a brief staff report today, going over some of the material in the blue sheet, and then I will yield to, I believe Phil Nix, the new executive director of Slina Housing Authority is on with us, as well as Holly Knight of BGC Advantage, which is the private firm that is working with Slina Housing Authority on this project. And they are going to go through their presentation. So I'm going to go over a few things and then we'll transition. I believe Jacob has the presentation that will pop up when Holly and Phil do their portion. With that, just a little bit of background about the Slina Housing Authority. They were created in 1967 by the city commission, following the Kansas Municipal Housing Law, which was enacted in 1957. The Slina Housing Authority is managed by a five-member board and of course has an executive director and several members of staff who help to run the organization and deal with building maintenance. It's the mission of the Housing Authority to provide and advocate for affordable, safe living environments and opportunities to become self-sufficient for persons of very low to moderate income, primarily through programs, through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or commonly referred to as HUD. Just to put it into perspective, what the Housing Authority does, they manage 317 housing choice vouchers. This program is commonly referred to as Section 8 Housing, 67 specialty vouchers and 162 public housing units. That is physical housing units that are owned and run by the Housing Authority versus the voucher program. In addition to $75,000 of security deposit assistance program that it works with different individuals to help get housing deposits so they can get renting something. Also part of kind of understanding what is the role of the city commission in this and how the relationship works and why the Housing Authority is here talking to you today is to understand the city's role or the city's relationship with the Housing Authority. So as I mentioned, our Housing Authority was formed as part of the Kansas Municipal Housing Law. And that law in 1957 conveyed various powers to a city, which included, I'm not going to go through all these in great detail as they are outlined in the blue sheet, but preparing, carrying out and operating housing projects. A city could undertake and carry out studies and analysis of housing. It could arrange or contract for furnishings for persons or agencies, public, private investment, lease or rent any dwellings, and the list goes on there. The type of powers essentially you would associate with a municipality running a housing program. The Act also specifically gave cities or counties the power to create an agent of such municipality as an authority to be known as a housing authority. And so that's where we went and created our Housing Authority. And the relationship that we've had with the Housing Authority has progressed over the years. The Housing Authority, as I mentioned, was formed in 1967 specifically by resolution 2454. And in that, we specifically identified that all powers conferred to the city by the Act, except for a few powers were excluded and given to our Housing Authority. The authority could employ an executive director and go forth and basically do the business of the city. By 2005, we updated that resolution through 056177, because due to some HUD regulations, we had to be more clear about some of the powers that the Housing Authority would have. And so that resolution reaffirmed and restated those powers, specifically adding the power of the Housing Authority to acquire, dispose of any property other than those through eminent domain. And by this action, the city had delegated basically all powers of the Housing Act to Salina Housing Authority, except for, as I mentioned, eminent domain and the power to borrow money or issue bonds. By July of 2018, we were then talking about a joint resolution between the housing authority and the city commission, in which we dealt with deeds that were associated with tracts of real estate under the administration of the housing authority. And part of that was getting those deeds in the statutory name of the housing authority and clearing those things up, essentially so we could start to move towards this RAD process. But there is some specific language that I did highlight in the blue sheet that I think the commission should be aware of, that in the event of a withdrawal or modification, the delegation of the authority by the housing, by the city to the housing authority as an agent, the title to real estate held as any part of property under the housing authority would then revert back to the city. So again, those are just some details as this relationship has progressed about how real estate is being handled between these two entities. And why that relationship in real estate becomes prevalent is talking about the program change and what's really being asked by the housing authority today, and that is to move the housing authority into the RAD model for public housing. Really, the purpose for the RAD program started in 2012. Over the years, many housing authorities have been struggling to keep up with the capital costs associated with public housing. Essentially, there's a contractual relationship between the housing authority and HUD, and every year, certain allot of allotted money through the annual contribution contract is dedicated to capital funding. That amount of money really never keeps up with the overall cost that each unit needs. And it's not just Salina that's been experiencing this. This is housing authorities across the country. In order to better address that, HUD developed the RAD program in 2012 to start dealing with this backlog of capital needs by encouraging public-private partnerships to be developed in public housing that could then better leverage investments to start rebuilding public housing. This program was originally started and implemented in large, large public housing authorities and has been slowly rolled out to smaller agencies. In 2018, it also incorporated Section 18, which is demolition disposition of buildings. And I think Holly and Phil will get more into how these two programs connect. But lastly, by 2019, HUD was saying voluntarily, housing authorities of 250 or less units should get involved in RAD with a slight wink and nod that if you don't volunteer now, we will be moving towards mandatory. So this is, we can either do this now or we will do this later. But at this point, we are, we are taking, the housing authorities trying to take participation in this voluntary RAD conversion offered by HUD at this point. The housing authority in 2019, as part of this process, did select a private developer to work with. They sought a developer that had a great track record for working with communities like Salina, as well as having experience with RAD conversion projects. BGC Advantage has developed 35 partnerships with nonprofit organizations and public housing authorities and assisted over 60 public housing authorities with RAD conversions. There are several, there are several positive impacts that this program will have on Salina, and I'm, I'm not going to steal the thunder as they go through their presentation because I think it's best outlined in there. But in particular, what this is going to start to outline is how the housing authority is proposing to really update our current housing stock and why this model is critical to, to doing that. As a part of their application to HUD to begin this process, their HUD is requesting a letter of support from the local municipality. Therefore, Salina Housing Authority has brought this in front of the city commission today, asking that they adopt or approve, I should say, resolution 20-7922, specifically supporting and giving the mayor authorization to sign that letter of support. If another option for commission action would be to approve resolution 20-7922 with amendments as the city commission deems appropriate, or lastly, to postpone consideration of this resolution to a specified date and time and provide staff and the housing authority additional direction on how you could, how you could see this changing for further consideration. With that, I'm happy to take any questions. Otherwise, we can move on to the presentation. Holly, will you be starting that?
I think Phil and I are going to tag team it. Can you unmute both of our, our, yeah. And I don't see it up on the screen yet, or you're controlling that, correct?
Jacob, if you could, thank you.
Boy, everybody likes Jacob.
He's got a lot of power.
He can hit mute when he doesn't like what he's hearing. Thank you, Mayor and commissioners. I appreciate it. I also see that we have a board member on, on the line as well tonight. I recognize her, her picture. So if you'll go through the next one, to the next slide and we'll get started. So again, I think Lauren did a phenomenal job of kind of outlining the overview for our proposal tonight, which is really, we need a letter of support. That's all we're asking for tonight as we come forward. We're not asking for monetary support. We're not asking for, you know, donation. We really just need your support to be able to move forward. There are a couple of different aspects of this transition from public housing to affordable housing. And so the letter that we're asking for tonight supports both the RAD and the Section 18 proposals. But HUD does require, if you're going to make application to the special application center, that we get city support. So I do want to focus on, and I know Mr. Nix is there, he is the new executive director. We're so very happy to have him, such an experienced and seasoned executive director coming to, to continue the, the march forward with the development. I do want to make mention that these, this entire development does fit within the, the Live Salina Plan, as well as with any of the other plans, like you also have a Parks and Recreation Plan, which, you know, certainly we want children and families to be able to participate in. All right, next. I'm going to let Mr. Nix, do you want to talk a little bit about the housing authority? I know Lauren covered some of it, but do you want to talk about the next couple of slides?
Sure. As Lauren had said, the housing authority was established in 1967, was governed by a five-member board. I would like to highlight, I have been across the country and managed several housing authorities across the country. The thing of HUD funding becoming more and more short as the years go by is, has become a problem for housing authorities and housing authorities have had to start thinking outside the box of, of how they're going to manage their properties and keep their portfolio up to date. One particular detail that I would like to, to bring to your attention is that HUD's funding currently for rehabilitating their housing stock is currently about $1,000 per unit per year. The need is a lot greater than $1,000 per unit per year. Matter of fact, most housing authority needs, and I'm not talking about just Salina, I'm talking about across the country, are at, right around the threshold of $25,000 to $30,000 per unit, depending on what part of the country and what rehab costs are. That number could go extensively up. So HUD's current funding to take care of its public housing portfolio stock is just not in any way, shape, or form going to be able to maintain the current housing stock. And so HUD decided, like Lauren said in 2012, we've got to start doing something different than what we've done in the past. And so there's where RAD came, came into existence and, and it, it put a scare in the complete housing authority industry across the country is, how are we going to continue to maintain our units? And so the, the capital fund money is, is just not going to get the job done. And so, so the housing portfolio stock, not just in Salina, but, but everywhere else in the country, has become more desolate, more desolate across the country. And housing authorities are eventually going to be faced with a regulation by HUD says that you go to RAD. So, so if housing authorities don't consider now, it's, it's eventually coming. And so the housing authority, especially in Salina, and you have a unique situation here in Salina Housing Authority, and that is that 80% of your portfolio, housing portfolio, public housing stock is scattered all over town. That's not true across the country. You either have a mid-rise, high-rise, or you have a development, seven or eight-acre development where your housing portfolio is all together. Here in Salina, you've got a single-family home here, you've got a duplex over there, and it's scattered from north, south, east, west part of the city, which is a maintenance nightmare. And the housing portfolio stock, just from what I've observed since I've been here to since October 12, is, is in pretty dire situation as far as needs to be completely rehabbed and redone. And so the housing authority did its due diligence and RAD is relatively new in most housing authorities. Of course, with any kind of HUD program comes regulations. And so we, we sought out to, to find someone who could walk us through this process. And so the housing authority has hired BGC, which has extensive experience in this area. And that's, that's about all I have, Holly.
Okay. All right, will you go? Jacob, would you mind turning the next slide? The next couple of slides just tell a little bit, I think they recap a little bit about the housing authority, the specialty vouchers that the housing authority administers. And I will say that the Salina Housing Authority is in a position where HUD continues to call them to offer new vouchers, and that, that is unusual. There are not always housing authorities that are getting new vouchers and getting called and said, hey, do you want more? But you, you have a really well-run housing authority. Okay, next slide. Lauren mentioned the security deposit program, the fact that there is a self-sufficiency program. And this is important because this does enable the housing authority to have a catalyst for a homeownership program. So I'm not sure if you're aware, but the housing authority can allow the residents to utilize their Section 8 vouchers, their tenant-based voucher, to make mortgage assistance payments. And I do believe that is something that the housing authority wants to work towards in some of the sale of some of their units, as well as in the future, bringing people from rental into housing, into homeownership housing. Okay, next. So I think Mr. Nix did a good job of explaining $1,000 in capital fund and $25,000 to $30,000 in need. There just isn't a balance there. So there is a backlog, not just at Salina, but across the country, and that's really why we're here and why we're asking. Okay, next. So housing authority, just so that you know how it is funded, it's funded through capital fund operating and the, the tenants pay rent. And one thing that public housing doesn't have, that the new affordable housing will have, are reserves. So public housing model that was established back in 1937 under the housing act really did not think about the fact that things were going to go into disrepair and there needed to be some type of savings account or replacement reserve. Affordable housing, whether it's home funds or tax credits or rule development, whatever, there is a requirement to have a replacement reserve. And as HUD allows housing authorities to get out of public housing, they're really fixing that by requiring a replacement reserve. So a lot of times I have political officials, mayors, and folks ask, well, how, how do we know that it's not going to get back into the same disposition, you know, into the same position where we need these capital funds again? Well, for 20 years, HUD is requiring that money is put aside in the replacement reserve. Okay, next. Okay, next slide. So again, HUD has opened up the door. So because they don't have the funding to keep up with the needs of the public housing, HUD is allowing housing authorities to convert through RAD, Section 18, or even what's called voluntary conversion. And we're actually going to be using a combination of these different programs to convert the housing authority. And you might ask, why are you, you know, why are you combining all of these? That sounds really difficult. Well, we're doing that to make sure that we're leveraging the highest amount of subsidy and funding that we can get from HUD under each program. So sometimes dividing and, and combining them makes a lot more sense. Okay? Next slide. We worked closely with the housing authority and community and the residents. We've had also resident meetings and working with the board to really talk about the maintenance, to talk about the operations, to talk about each of the units, what makes sense, how much capital funds have they been having to put in to prop up certain units? And so really, it's been very difficult for the housing authority to run all over town to manage these different one-off sites, or maybe they have four units in one part of the northern part of the city, and then they get a maintenance call and they have, you know, a, a call that's weighed in the south part of the city. So it's been very difficult. We are looking to centralize some of the operational, you know, the operational centers and certainly operate more efficiently. And I think that that would make for better housing, create an anchor to also really spur other revitalization in some of the neighborhoods. Okay, next slide. So again, I think we talked a little bit about the developer. We are developer partners with the Salina Housing Authority, their board and their nonprofit. We are not doing things in isolation. We work for them, but we are partnering to decide, to decide what's the best style, what are the best, you know, style of housing, what are the best operationals, what are the best practices that are there? And really, what are those opportunities that we can better leverage? And even looking at some of the threats that can threaten some of the success for housing. Okay, next slide. Actually, I think it's a title slide, Jacob. You can keep going. I think we can also just mention about our track record. We've done many Section 18 and many RAD projects. And we've also worked to leverage over 600,000 in development sources for our public partners. That's next slide. Next slide. Just to kind of go over the asset repositioning tools, again, these are the four different tools that could be used. Section 18, RAD, we are going to now take advantage of what's called the blend, where we'll be using both. And again, we're really trying to leverage the highest amount of subsidy that we can receive from HUD. All right, next. We will be using the federal tax credit. We are actually going to be using tax-exempt bonds and 4% credits. And this is an IRS program that allows for private investment in affordable housing. All right, next slide. How does this really create affordable housing? In a traditional structure, you're able to have a lot more debt, and you'll see on the slide on the left-hand side, our rents are so much lower that we're not really able to afford that higher debt that traditional multifamily or marketplace family might have. So the tax credit actually helps provide equity and buy down the pricing that you need so you can have lower rents, thus lower debt, and the project can work. Okay, next. A lot of people ask, how did the tax credit get into the project? And I'm very visual, I don't know how many of you are, but it helps me to kind of see that process. But essentially, the government is giving either tax-exempt bonds to the state, and for the 4%, you have to leverage the tax-exempt bonds to be able to access the 4%. And then on the 9%, there's an allocation that is given to the state based on the population. And so the State Housing Finance Agency, the Kansas State Housing Finance Agency is the entity that actually approves housing credits and for residential developments that meet minimum thresholds and meet their underwriting requirements. These are a that meet minimum thresholds and meet their underwriting requirements. These are awarded to a limited partnership. So the housing authority will be a participant with us, as well as an investor in a limited partnership. And our limited partnership will include a syndicator or an entity that actually goes and gets people who have large tax liabilities, like American Express, Mutual of Omaha, Shell Oil Company. These are all companies that don't necessarily directly invest in our projects, but through these syndication entities invest. Okay, next. I mentioned that there were two types of tax credits, both a 9% and a 4%. A 9% is highly competitive, and it typically does not allow for the scattered site developments that we will still have. It will be a little less scattered, but they typically are looking at one project, one site, maybe across the street, but, you know, something that's contiguous. Again, the 4% credits will be used with the issuance of tax-exempt bonds. Okay, next And ours will also be looking, seeking about 19 million in bonds, and we will apply for tax credits as well as perm debt. We're pretty early in the process, and so we haven't really signed up anyone because we're waiting, obviously, for city approval before we start. But we will either do cash collateralized bonds with a public offering, or we may look at using a private placement vehicle as well. Next slide. So just to kind of give you a little idea on the organizational chart, a lot of people, you know, are very interested in this. So you can see that the Housing Authority of Salina does have a community development corporation, Salina Community Corporation. This is their nonprofit, and the nonprofit also has Salina Homes GP2. So Salina Homes GP2 and a Salina Homes GP1 are the two entities, BGC's entity and the Salina Housing Authority's entity. We actually will own 0.01%, but we will be the general partner. So we will handle day-in and day-out operations for 15 years. For 15 years, there will also be a 99.9% limited partner, which will be the investor. Here, you see my name. It's only a placeholder. I certainly don't have the proceeds that Shell Oil Company and American Express would be bringing to this project. The Salina RAD Homes will be the borrower, and will be the borrower for both the perm debt as well as the bond. And they will be also the recipient of any equity. All right, next slide. We actually are working to expand the availability of affordable housing. I know you have a good real estate market, but it really is difficult for people who are workforce housing or aging, and really, people that are at 30% of the area median income, to find safe, decent, affordable housing. So that's really important. As you move forward on your economic development front, you've got to have the housing for those people who are, I always say, pouring the coffee, or they're in the retail stores, or in some places, they're even the firemen that need our income qualifications. The Housing Authority also really needs to ensure not just physical stability, but there also needs to be financial stability for their projects moving forward. And they need to know that the developments that they have are there to last. We will be leveraging the private sector. The dollars that are coming from the government are just not there. And so that's really important. And we'll really be changing the model of this rely on the government for assistance, and really instead moving towards rely on the private sector investment in a smart real estate transaction. We will have target anchor developments in neighborhoods. And the Salina Housing Authority, and Mr. Nix can attest to that, this continues to have a waitlist and people who have demand for not just affordable housing, but even units that meet ADA requirements. We will have 7% of the units that are dedicated for ADA, and 2 of those percent would be for hearing and seeing impaired. All right, next. This is just a little bit, just to show that balancing growth with our infill strategy that we really do conform to your plans, and not only, you know, participating in public process, but also resident meetings as we go along. Okay, next. We do plan to rehabilitate 160 existing properties in the centralized neighborhood. And then we have some housing that is, really has some factors, like foundations, or they are just so old that they really can't be rehabilitated, or they have some type of gross use of utilities due to the age and the fact that they are not well-insulated. So we're calling these properties with limiting factors. We will be selling those. We will also be offering out on the market to sell some other additional units in the north and the south part of the city that really just don't conform to good operations. We also will income target, so we won't just look at providing housing for the 30% AMI. The current residents will certainly be protected, or they will be receiving a voucher. And our income targeting will go from 30% AMI to 60% of the area median income. And really, we're trying to address a mix of affordable units. Okay, next slide. Again, we are in negotiations in acquiring some additional properties. Certainly, we can't really disclose those, but there will be some additional new construction projects that we're looking at bringing. And again, really, we need the board's approval to be able to move forward to even begin our first applications with HUD, just the very first. You know, the first applications with HUD are like a raise your hand and say, hey, we want to put in an application. This is what we're thinking about doing. And then, once we get that initial approval for our concept, our concept, our concept application, excuse me, then we'll be able to move forward with more of the technical. But it really all starts with the city council and the mayor. Again, we look to leverage over 10 million in private investment, 14 in private debt. We will be using both the Section 8 and RAD programs. And again, we're converting out of an old public housing model into a new model. This is just a little bit on the, oh, this is, can you stay on the numbers for just one second? I think people are probably really interested in that. We've got a total sources and uses of $33 million. You're looking at being able to create 550 jobs during construction and 17 post-construction. And again, these dollars are coming from private sector. These are not federal dollars that are coming, you know, necessarily through IndyConduits manner. And they're not grant dollars from the city either. So again, we believe that we have a very sound project. This is a project that will allow the Housing Authority to move forward and take a step towards redevelopment and preserving that affordable housing that is so needed in the community. All right, next slide. Okay, I think, I think that's, I think that's, is there more? I think that's it. This is just a little bit more about the Indian Hills neighborhood, which I think you're probably very familiar. This scattered site development will continue to, you know, have the affordable housing, but there will be a few that were culled out just due to the viability of those individual, individual homes. Okay, next. Okay, this is the last slide. I'm so very sorry. Again, we are asking tonight for your support, to support the letter, so that we can just put in our application and get started with HUD. HUD will require many reviews of our application and our process. We've had our initial resident meetings, and we will have another resident meeting if the mayor, if the mayor and the city council do approve this tonight and we're able to move forward. You know, we would want to go back to the residents and tell them what was happening and what was going on. So thank you so much. I know this was a long and windy presentation, but obviously, the affordable housing in the community is really important to viability and to economic development and growth. So, Mr. Nix, I'll turn it back over to you to say any wrap-up items.
I would just like to say I appreciate the city council's involvement, and we really do solicit your support. This is for the benefit of the citizens of Salina and continuing affordable housing in the community is the reason why the housing authority is considering this proposal. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this is Mayor Hoppick. Do we have questions or comments from the commissioners for Holly or for Phil?
Commissioner Davis, I do. I'm not sure who to direct him to. I'll just throw him out there. Is the overall plan to more centralize the housing managed by the Salina Housing Authority by ultimately eliminating the individual units? I obviously thought that was a unique approach to housing because it kept families integrated with regular neighborhoods as opposed to concentrating people in, on the East Coast, if you call it, projects. What's, what would, what does the distribution look like 10 years from now?
It's really a combination of, so like the map that we just showed on the Indian Hills area, where you see that there are, it's, you know, parceled out, and there's individual neighborhood units. We will continue, though, we're only actually really selling 44 units. And two of those, two of those buildings of the 44 have four units. So the very furthest north and the very furthest south are two fourplexes that we're going to sell. And then the other that made up the 44 are really things that are just not so viable. So we're still scattered around. There will be a couple of other anchor projects and developments that will be new construction. I can't really talk too much about them. One is, I can tell you, is a very blighted area that we're interested in and we're in negotiations on. So I think that coming back to get something rezoned in this particular blighted area that the city would be very happy about.
And the reason I ask Commissioner Davis still, revitalization is not a term that's typically applied when people are discussing moving low-income housing into a neighborhood, unless neighborhood is in such bad shape, really, any development would bring it up. But certainly, if you have good housing, you at least have people on the street who may be helped take care of the place. So now with the 44 property, 42, so there'll be 42 left over, are those going to be replaced with single-family dwellings, or is the plan to go more towards multifamily dwellings?
No, the 44 that are sold will not be replaced necessarily with single-family dwellings. We are still looking at a couple of parcels, and it really depends on what we buy in terms of acreage. So, but I do want to mention this. So when we place new developments, they will have project-based vouchers with them. So when we do that, we still have to go into neighborhoods that have some kind of benefit for our residents. Even when we're taking over a blighted area or buying up something that's a blighted area, there has to be a benefit to our residents, or else you could have a fair housing issue. You know, you can't just place people in an island to themselves out there somewhere. So I do, I wanted to just follow up on that first comment. And again, the 44 units that are single-family homes right now are not necessarily going to be replaced with single-family homes. There will not be a one-for-one replacement of those.
Right, so I mean, is the general purpose of this program to consolidate housing necessarily?
No, no. The real purpose of it is to get funding that is secure funding, that's an annual contract basis, instead of not knowing what you're going to get from year to year based on capital funds and operating. It's really about stability. Now, the Salina Housing Authority is suffering. When gas prices go up, you know, a few years ago, they really had a strain on their budget because their maintenance trucks were going all over the city. So the consolidation issue is a concern. It is an operational concern of the Salina Housing Authority. It's not necessarily a concern for the program. Now, there are some units that we're looking at that have some environmental concerns, and those would be something that would fall under the Section 18 provision when there are environmental concerns. So we do have a few of those that are part of that 44.
And what would the Salina Housing Authority's option be if this program either didn't exist or wasn't utilized?
Well, I think-
Maintaining scattered property.
Can you ask that one more time?
Yeah, as far as maintaining their current scattering of properties, the Salina Housing Authority have a viable Plan B if this program is not utilized.
I think that one is probably better answered by Mr. Nix or one of the board members that's on the call. I can speak only generally to the fact that their funding is dwindling, and it is getting harder and harder for housing authorities to afford operationally just the basics, the insurance, the maintenance. A lot of housing authorities are starting to lose their units because they're not up to par for the inspections that HUD does. And so there's, we're losing like 10,000 units a year in public housing because they just can't keep up. But I think Mr. Nix would be better to speak specifically about the Salina Housing Authority's position.
And I would answer that, not just for Salina, for across the country, as housing authorities have been faced with this shortage of funding for years. We would continue to maintain under what we currently have, the funding we have to maintain those properties. But eventually, we're going to get to a point to where we cannot maintain the viability of the unit, simply because they are in such capital needs, such as right now, there's a lot of our units that has foundation issues as we speak. And outside of completely tearing down and rebuilding that unit, it gets hard to keep them in repair without money to do so. And this is, this is a situation that every housing authority in the country is facing and has faced for years. But as that funding from the federal government continues to dwindle year by year, then housing authorities are going to have to determine how we either mainstay stock, or we eventually just quit letting anyone live in those units that are dilapidated and just maintain the units that we can keep current. And we're basically just, some of the units in our portfolio, we're just meeting the very basics of making it a safe, affordable housing unit. As far as keeping updated and keeping a viable unit in competition with new housing developments in the community, there is none. If I were to take you around to visit all of our current public housing units, you would see that we have nicer units, and then our older units are just barely maintained. And it's hard for people to decide that they want to live in that unit. So to answer that question in a broad sense, housing authorities don't know what they're going to do in years. And so this is the reason why HUD came up with RAD, and the situation where we possibly might have an option to keep being able to offer affordable housing in our communities.
And Mr. Davis, I do want to add this. This is a negative. I hate to say this, but I have seen this happen. So HUD will take care of the resident, meaning they'll give them a voucher, but they will not necessarily take care of the units. I'm working in a community right now where the units are just boarded up. The mayor is pulling, you know, his hair out, but they're boarded up units. his hair out, but they're boarded up units. HUD decided to give, you know, vouchers and the units are just sitting there because there's not a plan and not money. So, I mean, that doesn't happen all the time, but I have seen HUD starting to move to, they consider issuing a voucher, a manner of taking care of the resident. If you don't have enough places in your community for those folks to take their voucher that would meet HQS, then you have another problem. You've got the boarded up unit and then you need something that meets HQS, so.
Right. And just one last question. When those properties are being rehabbed, do you already have housing available for the people who'd be displaced for the-
So, we don't. That's a great question, but we use what's called a temporary relocation plan. So, before we, like usually it's around six months out and it depends on what the attrition rate is at the housing authority. But we'll start accumulating some vacancies in units so that we can move people within the developments. And, you know, they don't have to go to a hotel or, you know, something of that nature, unless there's somebody that has some specific need, but we will work with them. And it's only temporary relocation except for the units that are being sold. And those people will be offered a voucher or the first right to return and all of their expenses are paid by the project. So, relocation is, you know, for temporary relocation, we pay for it and for permanent relocation, we follow the Uniform Relocation Act.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Good question.
Hey, other commissioners?
Mayor Hoppick, Commissioner Hodges here. I have a few questions. And again, I'm not sure who to direct them to. I wanted to follow up on Dr. Davis's questions regarding the centralization and consolidation of units. And Dr. Davis had asked about where, what that would look like in 10 years and you'd replied that you'd be getting rid of units at the extreme and each end of the city. So, are you looking at specific streets that you want to have the developments bounded by? I mean, how, what does that look like? Where are the units going to be located in the next 10 years?
Sure. So, 44 of the current units, which include throughout the central city, are either, and they're being sold either because they just really, it's not worth HUD money.
I understand about the deaccession of the units and how you've chosen to deaccession them. I'm looking at, when you're talking about consolidation, what are the boundaries of that consolidation?
The city limits.
But in terms of the plan to centralize the units' locations, what are the preferred boundaries of that?
Well, we don't really have specific boundaries. We have a mass in, you know, a mass of single-family around the Indian Hills neighborhood. We have these, you know, half a dozen units that, I mean, one is a fourplex in the north part of the city and one is a fourplex in the south part of the city. They're, you know, almost too agrarian in the south part of the city. Those are really what we're getting rid of. But there's not a boundary per se. And so, while we're, when we're building new, we are looking at developments in communities. We are not doing the onesies and twosies that are there on certain streets anymore. We will be doing, you know, a resident community center and homes around it so that we can better provide services to the residents. But there are no specific magic boundaries. I mean, we are looking at some parcels for the new construction, but, you know, again, we're replacing, you know, more than the 44 units, but there's not a specific, really, there's no magical boundary.
Holly, I think maybe, if I'm understanding what Commissioner Hodges is asking, I think when this got discussed earlier, one of the ways that Tina had kind of explained it to me is it's not even just one single location, it's even just a general area of town. Because right now, the units run all over the place that even if they could get, you know, if you had a couple acres here to do a project, a couple acres here, but if the drive time is only five minutes of even just consolidating to a general overall area, that would be helpful to the housing authority versus a singular location where they were putting a concentrated number of units, like, kind of, I mean, Commissioner Davis mentioned a project. I mean, I don't think in Salina what we're saying is a high-rise of any sort. I mean, we have some rural communities in Kansas that have kind of one apartment tower, but I think what the housing authority has been looking at is more spread out number of units, some more concentrations in overall neighborhoods. Is that true, Holly?
Yes, that is true. Thank you for helping me. I'm sorry, Commissioner Hodges. So, a great example of this, and I can talk about this one because it's done, the Ashby House was purchased. It is, you know, a few units, but they are close enough to some of the others that it makes sense. They were in disrepair and needed to be repaired. And so, those are a few of the units that would be used to replace the, you know, to replace some of those 44 that were, again, scattered or not. So, that's a good example of how we, how we're addressing replacement housing, but we will have some new construction as well. And obviously, with that new construction, it is a possibility that we'll have to come back and ask for zoning of anything of that nature. Does that help? Sorry.
Commissioner Hodges here. I feel stupid identifying myself again, but I, that's what we're supposed to do. Thank you, Mr. Eskel too, for jumping in there and thank you, Holly, as well. I guess it boils down to what role does the city commission, does the governing body play in terms of, I'm sure that we all have different points of view on, you know, whether housing is more concentrated or more spread out, but in terms of being a part of that conversation, what, it's kind of a policy decision, what is the commission's role, if any, in that conversation?
Well, your attorney may want to address that. And of course, you actually appoint board members to serve on the housing authority board. So, through your board members, they're, you know, month to month and looking at policies and looking at really financial viability and really, they're the ones who are setting policy for what's best for, in their opinion, you know, what's best for their mission, which is to provide affordable housing. It's not just public housing, it is, you know, their mission to provide affordable. So, but I mean, I really think that's probably- Right. That might be something your attorney would better answer than me.
Thank you. Mr. Benson, I don't know if you want to weigh in or not on that.
Greg Benson, legal counsel. I'll be happy to briefly. The introductory information in the blue sheet was intended to be helpful for commissioners in terms of the relationship between the two entities. And if, I can't claim to be a student of housing authorities across the state, but it would seem as though that relationship has worked well over time, even to the point that the housing authority has conducted a successful program largely independently of any direct involvement by the city, other than most recently, that cooperative effort in terms of the titling of all of those units in anticipation of this type of program. To your point, the city commission is still the delegating authority. Delegated authorities can be modified over time and whatever degree of input in that delegation that the governing body might wish to make, I think is within the governing body's purview. It is a matter of communicating that in a way that presumably would allow the continued cooperative effort that has been the basis for the current successes.
Thank you, Commissioner Hodges. Thank you, Mr. Benson. And I do have a follow-up question, I think that would be best specifically addressed by you. I got this question from a citizen and I'm just going to go ahead and read their message to me. They say, "My concern is that there should be, no commissioner that is associated with real estate be able to benefit from the selling of the homes. The housing authority needs to sell to move forward with this project." Is that, how do our individual roles on the commission? I mean, is that, is that, is that a reasonable request? Is that just, you know, if you could just address if that's something that's even addressable?
Well, I think it is. The, and I think state law takes care of that matter for us-
Okay.
In that, this is a broad-reaching, general policy question for the governing body. Now, when it comes down to the implementation of that, I think we're down to the question of the analysis under the city's ethics policy, which, as you know, mirrors state law, as to whether there are any substantial interests held by an individual city commissioner or whether there are any circumstances that elevate to a common law conflict of interest with regard to any specific commissioners. So, I think that's the provision that law currently provides to address those scenarios as they might develop. And I think that would be the case for board members on the housing authority as well. Those same principles would apply.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Benson. Commissioner Hodges, I'm sorry, I just have one more question regarding the Centennial Indian Hills neighborhood. I think this is probably a question for Mr. Skreg. Is the highlighted property on that particular slide, is that city property or is that privately owned?
Yeah, my recollection of that slide is that was highlighting Centennial Park, city property.
Okay.
Well, we're not purchasing Centennial. I think that was part of services and something that was remaining when we thought that there was an opportunity for it, but we're not planning on doing anything with Centennial Park.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
Sorry.
There was a pretty vigorous community discussion about Centennial Park and I wasn't sure if the highlighted slide meant that there was still development proceeding in Centennial Park.
No, but we do like the community center there. I mean, there's a lot of activity, so it's good for the neighborhood. But no, sorry, I see what you're talking about. It's confusing. We'll make a change on that before we present it.
That's all I have.
This is Mayor Hoppick. That may have come out of the housing study that was done originally, Holly.
Maybe so, but I can see where that could be confusing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
This is Mike Skreg and I'll offer up one clarification and Holly or Mr. Benson can correct me, but the housing authority has a broad delegation of authority on our behalf. And so, with respect to geographic locations and property transactions, those would all be done independently by the housing authority. They would not come back to the city commission for ratification. And so, as it's currently structured. So, and the decision before us today is the letter of support. The remainder of those decisions would not be returning to the city commission for action.
Mayor Hoppick, I did have one question. Looking at the worksheets, there did appear that there was, there would be some bonding and I believe, I don't remember if I wrote it down, right, approximately $19 million. Who's responsible for guaranteeing that debt?
We are. As the developer, the housing authority doesn't have non-federal funds, so we're actually responsible for doing the guarantee both in the short interim during construction and if we don't do a short-term cash collateralized, we opt to go with a long-term drawdown. We'll be responsible for out, for out the life of the loan.
Okay. Mayor Hoppick here again. Okay, I guess my question was because of our working relationship with the housing authority, the city does not bond that then, that's correct?
That is correct. We're using bonding from the state allocation and you're not responsible for, it's a housing and we're, I guess, you know, we're responsible. We have to provide the guarantees and letter of intent, you know, those kind of things.
Well, this is Mayor Hoppick. I can speak for being a part of the industry. We are short on housing. And when I say we're short on housing, we're short on clean, safe housing too. So, I do appreciate the housing authorities stepping up and trying to improve some of these properties. So, thank you very much.
Mayor, one more question.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis. You know, we hear a lot of terms, low-income housing, workforce housing, income-qualified housing. How do you manage the stigma associated with low-income housing, particularly if it's going to be new into a neighborhood? My sense is that there's a economic need to consolidate some of the housing just for property management. But I wonder, how do you do that without, you know, setting up property to people, oh, that's just the low housing, don't worry about that? Or how do you place it so that people can take advantage of nice parks and recreational facilities?
Dr. Davis, and I apologize for not recognizing that before. It's a great question and it's actually something that all affordable housing developers have to deal with. It's not new, it won't be new to Salina. Anytime that we're looking at doing a new development, a lot of times, we're kind of doing knock and, we call it knock and talks, to get a feel with the surrounding neighbors or business owners or whatever, whomever it might be, to kind of get a feel or a sense. We will also look to see if we can figure out if they are, how do I want to say it? If there are, for example, sometimes there are out-of-state owners of property, especially rental property, or it might be air property. So, we kind of try to get a feel for who is it, are they really there, is it, you know, to kind of get a feel. But there is such a thing as nimbyism and people do it. And I think that our product also is really nice. We deliver affordable housing, but we have a very nice product, whether it's new construction or rehab. You know, we won't do a deal if we just can't make something work and make it better than when we were there to begin with. So, we do have to show some of our products sometimes, especially if we're having to go through a planning and zoning meeting. Those are difficult. If there is something that we purchase that is not properly zoned, we would have to come back to you and answer your questions and, you know, Mrs. Hodges' questions and all of those others about those. But that is, that's a, you know, I don't have a crystal ball, but we experience that wherever we go. And even when I'm doing, like, we do workforce housing, you know, which is, you know, sometimes it's, you call it market rate, sometimes it's just below market rate. Some people don't want that in their neighborhood. So, it really just depends on the parcel and the site. And we also do a rebranding. Now, the Salina Housing Authority has so much scattered stuff that you probably don't know it all, you know, from one to the other. But when we're working on, you know, like for the Ashby House, we wouldn't call it the Ashby House. It'll have another name. It won't be called the same thing. So, we will rebrand when we're going through part of the, you know, renovation process. So, it's a great question. I'm not so sure I really was- I'm not so sure I really was able to answer, but nimbyism is a live issue, and no matter whether it's, you know, a Walmart, or, you know, we had a crazy Costco kind of situation in my community, people come out and either they support or they don't support. We try to mitigate it to the extent we can.
Well, I'm just encouraged by the fact that you are aware of it and sensitive to it, and, and thank you for clearing up the issue about Centennial Park, because if you want to keep a neighborhood strong and vibrant, give it a great park.
Yes. You have a lot of, you have a lot of great parks in town, too. I can say, I think you're a very smart community when it comes to your planning and what you've thought through. It's very nice, very livable.
I'll play that last statement back some Monday evening at about eight o'clock. Come to grips with our plan. Remember what she said. How is it? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor Hoppick, here. Commissioner Franz or Commissioner Ryan, do you have any questions or comments?
None here.
Commissioner Franz, I do have some elementary questions, I think, and as I understand that this, this whole process applies to the 162 public housing units that the Authority manages now, it does not affect the voucher program or anything like that, it's just the units that they own and rent. And in the case of those units, what happens is someone rents the unit, they pay rent for the unit at some level, but is then subsidized at some level, depending on their income from the federal government. And that is what you call your operating budget, those two items. You get a pittance, and I would agree, a thousand dollars a year per unit is pretty much of a pittance, especially on an older, on an older structure. Now, as I understand, from what I've heard, is that, that operating flow for, from rentals and from the federal supplement are barely sufficient to meet operating needs. In other words, if, in fact, driving the car around town to take care of facilities at remote locations drives the gasoline bill up enough to stretch the budget, you're pretty limited. Now, if I, if I look at, and it's the private investment page on the, on the, on the presentation, you know, there's a thirty-three-million-dollar project there, the ten-million-some-odd dollars that is described as equity, I presume, is the tax credits, that's the tax credit portion, and that's a, that's a great idea to use that. My concern is, as Mayor Hoppick mentioned, the approximately nineteen million dollars in debt. If you are already strapped, based on your rentals, to pay your bare operating expenses, where does the money come from to repay the debt?
Sure. So you've, you've touched on a couple of items, so let me work backwards. So the money to come back from, to pay the debt actually comes from the, that tax, excuse me, the tax credit equity. So that's one portion. Remember the slide where I showed the two little houses in red and gold, and it said tax credit equity, and it drives the debt down so that when your debt is less, you don't have to have as high of rents to pay it? So that's one, one thing.
Okay.
And the second thing is, we're actually, go ahead.
I was about to say, I understand that part, but even counting the tax credit added, tax credits to the source, you're still left with nineteen million dollars of debt.
We have four, oh, 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 we have fourteen million dollars that will be left in debt after our tax credit source and our sales proceeds.
Plus the four million eight forty, I presume, is debt. The seller note.
The seller note is actually the Housing Authority note, and so it's paid back after cash flow, so it's not a hard debt. So we're actually only making payments on the seller note as there is cash available. It is a real note. It does, it will carry an interest rate, it will help drive yield for the investor, but it is not, this, it is not, it has a debt coverage ratio, like the first mortgage.
There's not a payment schedule on it.
Well, there is a payment schedule on it, but it is only based on available cash flow.
Okay.
And that is, you're, are you a banker?
No.
No? Okay. Well, you're very intelligent and able to pick that out. So these kind of seller take-back notes only really work with housing authorities as well as nonprofits who owe no debt or very little debt. And the reason that it's a sales note, and we want the sale price to be high, is because we're able to get acquisition credits for the tax credit program, so it drives our private investment up. And it's not, we call it soft debt. We don't call it hard debt, we call it soft debt. So, so that's one thing. You also said one other thing I need to correct. You said, "So essentially, it really doesn't change the public housing or the voucher program." You've got all of that correct. I do just want to point out that the subsidy will go away from the public housing, and the Housing Authority will be assigned new vouchers, additional vouchers above what they have now. And so, the other thing is, we'll get more from the Section 18 vouchers than the Housing Authority is currently getting in that capital fund and operating fund. So that also changes the cash flow for this project. So I think that may also answer your, your question.
So you will be getting vouchers in addition to the Section 8 vouchers you currently receive?
The Housing Authority will get replacement vouchers, and they will be added to, so they don't take away from the tenant-based vouchers that are out on the street, they'll be added to, and they'll be project-based to these developments.
So that's what you mean by project-based vouchers, and that was one of the many terms that I am utterly confused about.
Sorry.
I get, I get the basic concept, but it was, it was difficult for me to see that cash flow, and I'm still not sure that I see it, actually, but let's go on.
Well, so two vouchers. There's a tenant-based voucher where people take their voucher and walk, and then there's a project-based voucher, and we call it a sticky voucher, it sticks to the side.
Okay.
To the unit.
Mayor Hoppick, here. Commissioner Franz, I guess I'm going to ask you a question because of the questions you were asking. Again, with us not being required to guarantee that debt, is your concern what the rents would be on that? Is that why the questions you're asking about servicing the debt, I guess?
Well, well, I understand it's not our debt, and that we wouldn't be, that we're not going to be held responsible to the community for that debt, but I would still hate to see us go down the road and, and have a default in the community on this sort of project. I mean, that's just not a good thing for us, I don't think. And I just want to, wanted to understand how that, how that payback was structured.
Mayor?
Yes.
Greg Binkson, legal counsel. I have, I had a couple of questions from Ms. Knight that have been touched upon by both you and Commissioner Franz. I didn't know exactly the best time to ask those, so whether it be before or after any public comment, or whenever you wish, I'm happy just to wait until whatever you think is the best time.
Why don't you go ahead and ask your questions, and then we'll open it up for public comments.
Ms. Knight, my questions do have a little bit more to the, as to the debt structure, and not so much, I can't claim to be a financial analyst, but from the legal standpoint of considerations for the city. And I don't know if Mr. Wood can pull it back up, but my questions related primarily to the organizational chart of the various entities involved. I hope this is helpful for commissioners. That's in that initial set of PowerPoints.
What, what is your question?
If we start from the bottom, am I correct that Solana Rad Homes LP, which I assume is a limited partnership, that that's where the primary development, that's the single-purpose entity with the primarily, primary development activity?
It is. They are the borrower, and they're also the recipient of the equity.
As some may or may not know, in a limited partnership structure, the limited partner has no financial obligation. The general partner holds the financial obligation. As we work our way up the chart, we know that the ninety-nine-point-nine percent interest is the limited partner, who would have no responsibility for the debt. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. You're correct.
So as we look to the point zero-one percent entity, the general partner identified as Solana GP, I assume that's for general partner, LLC. Is that where the debt obligation stops?
So we actually, on the BGC side, sign as the corporate guarantor and personal guarantors for the projects. The Solana Community Corporation and the Housing Authority of the Cities of Solana, they have no liquidity, no balance sheet, that's non-federal dollars, to actually be able to make guarantees. Now, if they, over time, are able to do more developments, are able to do more grant programs, maybe they will be able to earn more non-federal funds or non-restricted funds. So hopefully, over time, they'll be able to provide their own guarantees, but at this point in time, they can't. So BGC has the burden. That's one of the reasons that housing authorities bring in private developers to partner with them, because they don't have those resources.
Appreciate that. If, if we look to the line of Solana Homes GP II and Solana Homes GP I, any debt responsibility at that level?
Well, the debt responsibility is, the borrower is the LP. So it does not flow into, the responsibility for the guarantees, if something were to go wrong, who has to come out of pocket? Starts with the Solana GP homes, but essentially, we're guaranteeing it corporately with BGC Advantage, and then secondary personal guarantees. On the BGC Advantage side, not on the community, Solana Community Corporation, and not the Housing Authority of the City of Solana. And the Solana Homes GP II has no cash either. They don't provide guarantees.
Okay. Very good, I appreciate that. As you can imagine, that's my concern, particularly as it would relate to the city, and also the Housing Authority from the standpoint, as I believe you're aware, that is one of the delegated authorities that the city has not delegated, and that is the power to borrow. The Housing Authority does not have the power to borrow.
And they're not borrowing here, and I believe we provided the city with an opinion, an attorney's opinion from Orlando Cabrera, and they're not the borrower here. Again, the borrower's the Solana Rad Homes, and so they're also not able to provide guarantees. So they're really, you know, if there is an event, and the events on the tax credit side, the foreclosure events are like point oh-oh-oh-four percent default, because usually the private investor would step in before a default would happen. But again, if something were to happen, they do not have payback responsibility, the BGC side actually does.
Appreciate that.
Sure, no problem.
The discussion about the seller note, I appreciate Commissioner Franz's question. Is there an element of debt for the Housing Authority related to that aspect?
Well, the element of debt would be the project owes the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority is not borrowing. The Housing Authority in a seller take-back note, they're selling and they're lending. No, no, no borrowing.
Okay. Am I correct, then, also, as we look at the uses on the private investment chart, that there would not be any basis for an independent obligation of either the city or the Housing Authority for, for those uses? Any of those uses?
Not from the city. There are, no, not from the, for uses or for sources. There, there's no obligation for the uses, obviously. We're not paying you except for the, I take that back. You said for the uses. We would be paying the city for permits. That's part of our soft cost. You said obligation to the city for uses?
Well, my concern was whether they're in the, the overall package. I understand that the sources are intended to cover the uses. Is there any scenario in which, if there is a shortfall in the sources, that there would still be any basis or any expectation that the city or the Housing Authority be ultimately responsible for those costs associated with the uses?
Responsible for the cost, not necessarily if the project has closed. Nothing from the city. No responsibility, nothing. I think the opinion letter also outlined that. But HUD will allow that public money into the project. You know, they have, you know, PHA sales proceeds that will be derived from the sale of the forty-four units, and HUD allows those dollars to come back into the project. HUD allows the Housing Authority to utilize, if they were to get a security grant, they could put that towards the project, things of that nature. But nothing, nothing after closing, and, and no responsibility of the cities. Am I answering any of your questions correctly? I mean, did I answer your question? Okay.
You are, and I had anticipated and hoped that would be the answer. I just wanted to make sure for the benefit of the governing body that we talked about that.
Right. And understand that HUD has to approve this. They are the number-one group, you know, we got, we have to get approval from. Not to mention, it would also be underwritten by the Housing Finance Agency, as well as the lender, as well as if we do a public offering, you know, that bond underwriter, so, and the equity investors. So there will be a lot of eyes underwriting this project as we move forward. But again, no responsibility of the city. Unless you guys have some money that you'd like to put towards the project, we would certainly entertain that.
Yeah. Thank you.
We can find a use.
If I may, one quick question, just again, back to the organizational chart, is, what is identified there as the Solana Community Corporation, is that the already-created Solana Housing Services Corporation? Are those one and the same, or are they different?
Uh, I actually don't know the answer to that. Phil, I can't remember. Maybe, Ms. Trigg, do you know if that? I just don't remember off the top of my head. I'm sorry, I'm not sure if they have just one nonprofit, or if they had two.
Okay. And I'm not suggesting that it matters so much, I just knew that there were some properties being titled in the name of the Solana Housing Services Corporation, and I didn't know if it was this entity, so.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not so sure that it is. Remember that the Housing Authority was part- Yeah, I don't, I'm not so sure that it is. Remember that the Housing Authority was partnering with the Chodo. So I'm sorry, I, I'm not quite as familiar with all those trun- transactions, but I know that there were some, uh, Mr. Nix reminded me about the Seneca Project, and there were some partnerships that were developed. So I, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure. That may be something different.
There has not been a partnership agreement between the Housing Authority or Chodo. Uh, the agreement, from what I understand, of course, I was not here, was that the Housing Authority would purchase the Seneca properties for the Chodo, so as the Chodo could purchase those properties and use for either redevelopment or home. That, to my knowledge, is the only agreement that's been between the Housing Authority or Chodo. And that is not a formal legal agreement. That was just a verbal agreement that the Housing Authority has done it, and that was as a favor to the Chodo. To my knowledge, that, that is the only, uh, agreement that's been made. Salina Housing Services is the only nonprofit that has been established.
I knew it was the Ashby Properties, I believe, that were titled in that entity.
Yes.
Very good. Well, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will open it up to public comment. Again, if somebody would like to comment, um, I believe it's been explained how you can raise your hand. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. And please give us your name and, and where you're from. So, Mr. Wood, I will to you. See if anyone's raising their hand.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I don't see any raised hands. Oh, we do have one. Eric Brown here. I will give you access to speak. Eric, you should have the ability to speak now. Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioners, Mayor, thank you. Uh, my name is Eric Brown. I am, uh, President of the Chamber of Commerce and also have been on the Salina Housing Authority Board, and served in the chair role for two years. Um, I've been on that board for four years now. Um, part of the reason I became interested in the Housing Authority Board is because I knew that there are, uh, housing issues and, um, housing challenges in the city of Salina. Um, and I think that understanding where we are right now today, as I've had at least, um, and I think Mr. Scragg and others can attest to this, that you've heard as well, we've had at least three different, unique, um, housing developers looking at Salina. B G C was, uh, chosen by our, uh, organization to move this forward um, two years ago now, uh, with this request, uh, to the C. Uh, I would really, uh, look for support. We can actually move forward on housing stock, um, rehabilitating the housing stock. We've heard a lot about consolidation and condensing. Um, I think rehabilitation of what we have to provide a better housing product to this population, which I know, uh, the City Commission is very interested in this population, making sure they're safe and secure, would go a lot way. The development side is a, is a side that we want to look at, that we think we can do, um, and we know we can do, but at this point, the real emphasis, I think, is, is rehabilitating what we have and putting it in a good place, um, for our residents for a long term. So I would just humbly ask that the, uh, City Commission, uh, approve our request um, for support of this letter. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor Hoppick here. Thank you, uh, Mr. Brown, for your comments, and thank you for your time on that board also. Uh, Mr. Wood, do we have anyone else?
I don't see any other raised hands, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. With that, I will bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor Hoppick, Commissioner Hodges here. I move to reapprove Resolution Number twenty dash seventy-nine two, approving a support letter for the Salina Housing Authority's participation in the Department of Housing and Urban Development, Section eighteen, and Rad conversion programs.
Carl Ryan here. I'll second.
Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number two zero dash seven nine two two. I will ask, uh, Holly to do a roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That passes five zero. Did I call you Holly instead of Shandy? I apologize. We have Holly, who's our city, is our, works for our city manager, so. So, okay, I would like to thank all participants for your time and wish everyone the, the best of luck. Thank you. Okay, that will move us to item seven point three. Candy, are you there?
Oh, I was muted. Here we go. Item seven point three, authorize the purchase of several items to be maintained, stored, and utilized by the Salina Police Department.
Okay, I believe, uh, Chief Nelson is with us. If the four is yours.
Yes, thank you. We're good?
There, we got you.
I can hear you.
I am Brad Nelson, Chief of Police. Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Hoppick and fellow Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to present this proposal to you today. Uh, in July of two thousand sixteen, by resolution, our SPD Excellence Fund Board was established under the auspices of the Greater Salina Community Foundation. This resolution required prior approval by this board to purchase assets to be utilized by our department. These board members have been extreme, extremely successful over the past three and a half years in raising funds for our department. As you, as you may recall, this board recently raised the funds to purchase the two hundred and seven thou- two hundred and seven, two hundred and seven thousand dollar judgment simulator for our Salina Regional Training Center. I believe the citizens of our community who are on this board deserve recognition, and they are as follows. The board president is Byron Norris, Sarah George, Lucy Larson, Mike Marshall, Darren Nushefer, Carolyn Peterson, Joel Weimer, and Emeritus Board Member Daryl Wilson. Thank you for your service. Today, I am requesting approval to make several purchases in the future that, as described in the two thousand sixteen resolution, will enhance the capacity of the Salina Police Department to provide the highest level of quality law enforcement services for the Salina community. As a result of a grant submitted to the Wilson Family Trust, the SPD Excellence Fund was awarded fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars in October of this year. The board members met and voted unanimously to fund, if approved, the construction of a picnic, picnic shelter at our regional training center, and to purchase training mats, enclosed cargo trailer, and a utility terrain vehicle, also known as a ETB. Uh, I provided what I felt was justification for each item in my blue sheet, and I hope you agree. Uh, I am requesting permission to commence construction of the picnic shelter and purchase each described item in the future, once the best available pricing is determined. Uh, the fiscal im- uh, impact of these, if these items are obtained, is fu- future maintenance of the ETB and the shelter at some point. I don't believe that was on the, uh, blue sheet. My apologies. My apologies for that, but possible, uh, future maintenance of the shelter and licensing fee for the trailer. In regards to recommended actions, staff has identified the following alternatives for your consideration. Approve the construction of the picnic shelter and to purchase the training mats, enclosed cargo trailer, and ETB to be paid in full by the Salina Police Department Excellence Fund. Option number two is to decline the construction of the picnic shelter and to purchase the training mats, enclosed cargo trailer, and ETB and direct staff to consider other needs of the department. Staff recommends option number one, and I'm certainly happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Hey, Mayor Hoppick here. Do we have any Commissioners with questions or comments for Chief Nelson?
Commissioner David, it's just a minor, uh, showing you, you probably did come up with the answer already. But, uh, I'm assuming the maintenance on this will be relatively low over the course of the year for the two vehicles, but your budget be able to handle?
Absolutely. Yes, it's really minimal, especially in, in the first three to five years, it'd be minimal.
Right.
I, I do have a concern about picnic shelter. Um, you know, we've spent the, and it has to do with the location. Uh, we've spent a good part of this year talking about how we need to work to group connections with the community and community engagement, how that's important for the department. We're later today taking an action, or taking a step in what we hope is the right direction for that. We're not alone. You can read about this across the country. I'm gonna ask the question, if we really believe that building a facility, inside of a secure, fenced, electronically gated property at the edge of the community, really sends a message, uh, that advances any of those objectives? Or does it send a message of separation and estrangement from the community? I would rather us, uh, take those resources, given the approval of the granting agency, of course, and use that to expand or enhance, one of the shelters at Jerry Ivy Park to be used for this purpose, and perhaps give the department, uh, primacy as far as scheduling. Uh, maybe they get a block of time every year, uh, some method of doing that. I would also suggest that in conjunction of that, we could, uh, name the shelter, maybe do something else to recognize, John Riley Stonebreaker, who was our first officer that was killed in the line of duty in nineteen seventeen. Uh, you know, I, I, I just, I, uh, you know, that, that location is very visible. It's a residential neighborhood. It's across from the high school, from South High School. You know, I'm not asking, uh, the police to invite the larger Salina community to their events. But I do believe that upgrading an existing park structure in a high-traffic, uh, location like that, in a public park, uh, provides the department a great opportunity to improve the visibility and strength and trust. I, you know, I, uh, we can do with it what you will, but, uh, uh, that part of this request does concern me.
Commissioner Davis, a question. Is this like a canvas top large, you know, almost like what you'd put up, you know, on a portable basis if you're having a festival in town? Or is this like a brick thin shelter?
It, it's a permanent structure, similar to what you find in Jerry Ivy Memorial Park with, uh, I would assume built out of wood with a, uh, steel, uh, roof, but not enclosed.
Okay.
And if I could, uh, uh, address Commissioner France's concern, I, I understand that, but the whole purpose of this was for, uh, police officers and their family to not live their life in a fishbowl, which is what police officers do on a daily basis. They actually like occasionally not being in the public's eye, and we have held events at the Jerry Ivy Memorial Park, and they went, they went really well. But police officers being police officers, at times would like to be in their own area, uh, and that's how this came about. This wasn't an idea that I came up with. This came from below, uh, so they could have a location where we could have, uh, and I say family, but could have events within the department, where the department would go to the, to, to the training center. Uh, we've had many issues where, uh, many events where we barbecued. Uh, we cook. I love to cook hot dogs and hamburgers and such. We've done that in parks. We've done that in our own station, uh, in the, in the garage, the area. But the whole purpose was kind of probably to not be in that fishbowl. So I would respectfully disagree with that as far as what the purpose was, uh, for the actual shelter.
Hey, other questions or comments?
I, I guess just to follow Commissioner Hodges here. Sorry, I keep forgetting to identify myself. Um, you know, I, I don't have an, an issue with, with putting out a shelter at the training facility, but I think that perhaps if it truly adds up, the use, it, it is for the, the officers, for their family, and that's fine. I'm, I'm, I, I, I agree that it would be nice to have an outdoor location for officers who are taking a break from, um, the training center. But I have to agree with Commissioner France that it, I mean, it's a little disingenuous to, um, promote it as promoting community outreach, because the public's access to that necessarily. I mean, it's within the training, uh, facilities campus is, is going to be highly restricted. So, I guess, um, you know, to me, the, I guess the justification is, um, if the LEOs that are training out at the training center, if this is something that they require, then, you know, I, I, it's, it's a good investment, but, um, I don't feel like it can be, it can't be both. Um, if, if, if you take my, uh, if you take my meaning, and I guess that's the only comment I would have, regarding the request. I just want to thank, as always, the Police Department Excellence Fund and, um, specifically the Wilson Family Trust for, um, their generosity, and for providing things for law enforcement that, um, we haven't been able to provide in our budget.
Commissioner Davis, I, I think that last part of the statement, Commissioner Hodges, is the key to this. I mean, this is not something that probably would have made it through our, our budget just because of lack of money. And, uh, if the guys are outside working hard in this July, uh, it's probably just as easy to go under a picnic shelter to rest. Um, you know, I, I don't see anything wrong with them having a comfortable place outside of the sun to, to rest. Uh, I mean, none of us are jumping up ready to switch jobs with. Uh, and if, you know, they can get, you know, a couple of hours a quarter to relax and they may sit out there and read a book, who knows? Uh, but it's not costing us anything. It's, it's, it's far enough away from the main highway. No one's gonna drive by and say, why are they having fun? Well, if they did, what's wrong with policemen having fun? And policewomen, excuse me. Uh, I, it's, I don't really have an issue with it.
Yeah, if I could just say, uh, uh, and maybe, I was rereading the blue sheet that I wrote, and I'm not quite seeing where it was, uh, kind of a co-community thing in the police. This thing came, it sprang up the idea from the, uh, the rank and file. They did want their own, I hate to say their own, but they wanted, uh, their own location where, once again, it wasn't the fishbowl effect, which is what they do on a daily basis. So they, they really did, the intention was, they wanted to be out there without fear of everybody looking at them, taking pictures, doing whatever people do. Because once they know there's a large group of police officers, we're not supposed to have fun. And once they see a large group of police officers gathering, it does tend to get folks' attention. Some folks, not, not many, but some, and that makes the officers feel uncomfortable. So, that's what I was told, how this, uh, idea even came to fruition, was because of that feeling, and they wanted to have their own, uh, shelter per se.
Mayor, Mayor Hoppick here. I think if I'm reading this right and maybe interpreting what you're saying versus what, uh, Commissioner Franz says, it should, should read, will be used for events to provoke unity, and it, maybe that should be read within the force. Uh, maybe that was in tip, interpreted that it would be unity within the community, so that, that may be the difference.
Yeah.
And that would have been, that's a fantastic point. I wish I would have put that in there, yes.
It's always easier to edit than it is to write. Um, any other comments? If not, I will open it up to the public. Again, uh, if they, somebody would like to comment, please give your name, where you're from, and limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Wood, do we have any hands up?
I don't see any at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the Commission.
Mr. Mayor, this is Carl Ryan speaking. I move to reapprove the construction of the picnic shelter and to purchase the training mats, enclosed cargo trailer, and utility terrain vehicle to be paid, uh, in full by the SPD.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have a motion and a second. Shandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mayor, uh, may I ask, um, uh, are any of the shelter houses at Jerry Ivy named and, uh, would we be, uh, would they be available for naming if we wanted to recognize, uh, the, Mr. Stone, Officer Stonebreaker?
To my knowledge, they're not, and that would be a possibility. We can certainly verify that.
So we've got one nice community asset that we're going to, uh, put out with the new training center. Uh, I'd like to hope in the future that it's not so restricted that the police department wouldn't consider having a, a public promotional gathering out there and vice versa. Uh, those could also be held then at the, the regular park facility. So this is kind of a win-win all around. It looks to me like.
I think those are all good ideas. We can certainly pursue them.
Okay, that will lead us to item seven point four.
Item seven point four, second reading ordinance number two zero dash one one zero four six, adopting new article four, chapter thirty of the Slana code pertaining to the establishment and operation of the citizen review board.
Hey, um, did any commissioners have any comments or questions, uh, following the correction or the changes made to the ordinance from last time?
Commissioner Davis, my question is probably not exactly about the ordinance, but it does have something to do with a related issue. Uh, we have a deadline for citizens to apply to be considered for the citizens review board. Um, and we opened up interest form even before we had finished description of the board. And that we still officially haven't finished describing the board because, you know, the second reading will be slightly different from the, from the first reading. Uh, I don't see how we can ask citizens to have tomorrow as a deadline for a commission that we're just now officially creating today. Uh, there was originally a January fourth uh, deadline for applications. And instead of pushing it back, which wouldn't hurt anyone, we moved it forward. Uh, you know, I was out scrounging around trying to you know, tell folks, so I thought should at least consider looking at it. Uh, they said they'd think about it. I said, well, you don't have long to think. And they say, well, what will it be? What meetings be like? What do we do? And I really couldn't tell them officially because until this meeting tonight is over, we don't have an official description of, of this commission. The ordinance establishing the review board does not specifically address when we close acceptance of expression of interest form. So I'll be glad to take that up as a separate matter, even other business or uh, whenever, but, uh, yeah, I, I, I think it's somewhat backwards that we've asked people to apply to something that we haven't finished crafting, so.
We, we put out the I know we put out the E O Is, um, the requests quite a while back, and I know we've got quite a few app, I mean, well, I say quite a few applications. I'd have to look at Shandy for a number. But it's a significant number of applicants already, I can, I can tell you.
Well, I'm, 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 this Commissioner Davis, I'm more worried about the ones that you don't have. Uh, just because we've asked people to apply for something that didn't exist. This would be, you know, like six months ago, say, hey, you want to be first to take the vaccine? Uh, what vaccine? What's the side effect? What's it going to do? How many times do I have to take it? Nobody could tell you. And that's pretty much what we've asked people to do for this, to apply for something that we haven't finished.
I think, let's bring that up under other business.
All right.
Because this is, we're dealing right now with the actual ordinance, and I believe we can discuss that under, under business.
But, uh, yeah, I, I, I definitely, excuse me, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hodges here. Um, I, I, if we are going to deal with that under other business, I, I guess that's, that's fine, but I would like to know. Um, I expressed some concerns when we opened up the expression of interest because even at that time, we didn't know the qualifications that we were looking for. And in fact, we had to go back and alter our expression of interest form, um, to meet the, um, ordinance that we initially passed. So that's kind of been evolving and um, now I just, I guess I'm, I would just like to understand, and I think, I, I don't know, it, it, I guess we could discuss it under business, but to me, it seems kind of linked to this because it's like, you know, why, why did we shorten that expression of interest timeline? When I think that we all agreed that we wanted to increase the transparency and the participation um, in, in, in the board. So uh, I, 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 I just, I'm, I'm, I'm curious as to why we are, we're, we're closing that up earlier. And I guess, I guess that'd be a question for Mr. Skreg or whoever made the decision. Because I didn't learn about that until I received a press release on Thursday.
E O Is that were sent out, because this was done prior to all the other boards. And when we sent out the request for E O Is for this, I know there wasn't a, a specific date. And I know that we've been kind of wanting to get this on the move, and I've always had in my mind that this would be done by the end of the year. Was kind of my goal, so, um.
Well, Davis, and I'm, I'm going to say this tongue-in-cheek. Uh, but I think I can say and get away with it. Yeah, we waited four hundred years for something like this. An extra month is not going to make a difference. Um, this is, this is not something we need to rush at the end. Um, and we've shortened the application period by three weeks, which seems to be a tremendous shortening. Uh, when we really don't, I mean, it's at the end of the year and no board's going to meet during the holidays anyway. And then you get New Year's and you get Martin Luther King. So functionally, not much business gets conducted for the next month. So I, I don't see time really working against us. I think just the fact that we've created this, when you consider where the thought came from, that we've created it in two thousand twenty, is a fantastic accomplishment in and of itself. I think we need to take time, because not only do we have to select people, we're also going to have the issue of assigning, you know, what type terms people get. I mean, there's a lot to be decided. We don't need to rush this at the very end.
Commiss, Commissioner Hodges here. Um, and I guess the, the, you know, the other thing I'd like to say is that currently, we do have a law enforcement advisory board in place. We have a board that, that's functioning. But right now, when I've gone into the community and reached out to people and told them about this board, I can't tell them when they meet. Um, now that we've got the, you know, the, the ordinance is established, at least, um, you know, as of tomorrow, I would be able to share with them, um, parameters for experiences and expectations that we would have of the board, et cetera, et cetera. But, um, I, I don't know. I just, I, I would agree. And I know that there have been reservations expressed by the public about the fact that potentially I could be mayor next year. I could not be mayor. I mean, that's, that's a governing body's decision. And that we've had citizens express their reservations, um, about my ability, you know, to appoint. I mean, if we need to do something, um, that's more collaborative on the formation of this board, you know, what, whatever is, is, is going to result in our getting the most diverse um, parent proactive board that we can get is, I think, what, what our goal should be. And since we began this process with, um, a couple of community meetings, um, I got to thinking, I kind of feel like we're getting ahead of ourselves right now because, because of COVID and because of the Zoom meeting format. Um, and the, the, the fact that the risk of COVID is, you know, definitely going to be here with us for the next few months, at least. You know, we don't have another meeting to mark the end of that process. And now that we have an outline in shape, I think it's kind, I mean, I think it's incumbent upon us to have a final public meeting where we roll this out and say, this is what we passed on first reading. This is what, this is what the organization looks like. And really be able to solicit more, um, to, to, not more, but to solicit public input that's actually based on what we're going to do. Because it's very difficult for people to participate via Zoom. I mean, it, it just, it is what it is. So I mean, I guess my preference would be that we actually, um, postpone the second reading for a designated time to see if, um, these aren't some things that we, we could address. And that may not appeal to anyone else, but I just thought I'd throw that out there that we, um, take a look at, at how we can do this the best way, not the fastest way.
So Mike Skreg here, in, in response to your question about why we proceeded like we have, um, I don't know the date of it, but at one point, the city commission voted to instruct staff to proceed with uh, preparation and distribution of the, the E O Is. And to Commissioner Davis's point, um, I, I was slow in doing that. Uh, as the characterization of the membership took shape, I tried to incorporate that description into the E O I form in terms of the description of the, the body, as well as then add a question specific to, uh, the CRB with respect to, um, representation of community, uh, the community broadly and give applicants an opportunity to give any information they felt was helpful in, in, uh, consideration of their application in recognition of the conversation that taken place at that point by the, the city commission. So and, you know, it originally was a city commission decision and it still remains a city commission decision on how you wish to proceed.
Commissioner Davis, I, you know, even last week, we did not know for sure if you were related in some form or fashion to a law enforcement officer, if you could apply. Now, we, we got a definition of what a first-degree relative was. Uh, but, you know, a person who may have been in limbo in, in that regard would not have known until last week or really not until tonight, because we have the opportunity to change it tonight. Uh, so I, I think, uh, we, we have, um, perhaps not intentionally, but we, we probably have made some people hesitant to push the button on the application process just because they didn't know, one, if they were eligible, or two, uh, if it was something they wanted to be part of. So I, I just.
I, you know, I, I would, I would make a comment that the second reading is different from the first reading only largely in a few semantic changes. There's nothing really substantive there. And the first reading was, was by and large consistent with the direction that was given staff weeks ago to develop, uh, uh, a way forward. Uh, so I, you know, I think it's been plenty of time. And there is nothing about having a little bit of uncertainty about a specific detail that should have kept anybody from expressing interest in the issue.
Yeah, Commissioner, I don't, I don't usually go back and, and recall how I voted on something. Um, but, you know, that was not an unanimous decision to accept those expressions of interest before we had crafted the document. I know I was strongly against it. I think Commissioner Hodges was, was against it. We were asking people to apply for something. We couldn't define ourselves. And now that we, you know, tonight, this thing would become official. You know, it's nice that we have some expressions on, on board. Uh, but now we can actually show people what this is. And now there's some folks who can decide if they want to be a part of this. And I, I think to close it out tomorrow is, will be viewed with more distrust as trying to rush something past and exclude people from applying for it than any other benefit you can have by, by speeding the process up. I think that this would be very counterproductive to the, to the express purpose of this, of this commission.
Mayor, I'm, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis, if you're done.
I'm done. Thank you.
Carl Ryan here. Mayor, um, certainly this has been an important issue to a lot of people for quite some time, six months. Uh, there's, the community interest has been out there. And the fact that we may, by this ordinance, have made the, uh, qualifications a little stricter has not reduced the interest. Certainly, the people have had plenty of time that are interested in this subject to apply. I don't think that, uh, if we put in some restrictions that don't fit some people's parameters, that that has, uh, uh, stopped them or made them wait to see what the parameters are going to be. And number two, I have a lot of respect for you, Mayor Hoppick, for carrying this, uh, through and, uh, having all the public comment we did and structuring those meetings. I just had a, had a respect for you on this subject. I'd like to see, uh, you close it out before the end of the year with the appointments.
Commissioner Davis, again, I, you know, I, I don't, there's no, we, we're not going to close this out for another fifty years. Uh, this is just the first of a, you know, many baby steps in a direction. And I've never known us to suddenly remove three weeks notice or, or time period to apply, in particular, apply for something new and to apply for something that wasn't even created. I mean, we don't just suddenly say, okay, planning board, uh, or zoning board, uh, you know, you only have seventy-two hours to apply. Uh, only those who are in the know who, in particular, as slow as news travels now, I mean, you know, extra time is, is of value. I mean, because news travels slow. Uh, our newspapers two days behind. Um, people aren't necessarily, well, they aren't coming to meetings at all, um, physically. And, uh, while we have twenty people on the screen now, um, I'm guessing most of the twenty either get a check from the city every two weeks, uh, or in case the five of us no longer get a check from the city every two weeks, but used to. Um, I mean, it's, it's, there's, this is not the ideal, I mean, it's better than nothing. Uh, and, but not everybody, I'm finding out, has access to computers and, and Zoom in their house. Um, I mean, usually. What was the reason actually for, 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 because it was, it was, it was printed and announced that it was going to be January fourth.
Originally, when we sent, and it helped me out here, uh, Mr. Skreg, but when we sent the E O I Is out, I don't believe we had a deadline on that. I believe that when the, uh, notice was sent out on the other boards, this was tack, this one was added to it. Am I, is that correct?
Yeah, that, that is correct. Um, the commission originally directed the E O I, uh, request for E O Is be, uh, distributed. We, we did that. Um, and no deadline was set by the commission as part of that motion, but my understanding was that you wanted to expedite. So I was trying to sync that up with uh, the guidance I was getting in terms of what the makeup might be so we could describe that as part of the E O I. And the inclusion of it in that other notice, uh, was in error. It was not my intention, uh, miscommunication on the part of staff. So I was trying to, um, coordinate what I thought the, the commission's original direction was.
Commissioner, I, I think we wanted to expedite perhaps getting the CRB established. Uh, I don't remember voting to cut the move, the, the, the time forward now. And maybe my sources incorrect, but the, the, uh, Slana post, Slana scoop, both say the, uh, previously posted deadline was January fourth.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was communicated along with all of the, the other boards and commissions, uh, notice cycle. So it got picked up in that notice unintentionally.
Yeah, and I mean, that's Yeah, and I mean, that's it's it's what I've been letting people know that they had time to think about it over the holidays, but I guess not.
Yeah, well, there may be people who are who are away, I mean, who just wanted to see what finished project was. I just, you know, considering what would happen in the next month, this CRB, it's not going to meet over the holidays, it's not going to meet the first week of January. So, it's it's, we don't really have a compelling reason to shorten the application process by three weeks. I mean, unless you want to make people think that we're up to something that we're that we're, you know, we're trying to rush something through before they can catch, figure out what it is.
Yeah, for what it's worth, I think the the process, there's probably about a month's difference in timing when the board could be constituted from one approach to another.
Right, but I mean, this this board has a lot of work to do. One one month is not going to make a difference getting it off the ground.
No, I'm just offering that as clarification and.
And again, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Franz here, I've always been of the understanding that we wanted to get the board established and filled by the end of the year. That's always been my understanding. I was not aware that a notice went out with the January 4th deadline. That that is news to me tonight, so I I am, I'm a little conflicted by that at this point.
Commissioner Franz, this is Mayor Hoppick, and it is confusing because, again, that that was never, we had never had put actually a deadline on the EOIs. And those have been, I don't, I'd have to look back to see when the EOIs, when we started, when we put that together and and put it out to the public. But the city staff did pick that up and it did go out on several news sources stating that, you know, that the EOIs were due on the 4th. And then when we did our our announcement last week, it it looked as if we had moved them up, even though we had never officially had the the January date as our date for the EOIs to be due in.
And again, I ask, where did where did that press, Commissioner Hodges, where did the press release come from?
Which which one?
The 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 one on from Thursday that moved the deadline up to Tuesday.
It it came from the city manager's office and.
With direction with direction from my for myself.
Okay, we we would not move a public hearing up three weeks early without, if you set a date, you set a date.
But there was formally for the EOIs for this board, it got thrown in with the others in error.
Yeah, but well, you have to honor the error. I mean, that's not the public's fault. You know, we approved a lamppost being in the wrong place in front of the hotel, we moved it at our expense. That's what's the difference.
Well, respectfully to all the commissioners, the the issue before us is the second reading. I think this should come up under other business and that we, somebody make a motion about the change of the the date on the EOI acceptances, but I'd like to see the agenda move on, but we can bring that up at the end of the meeting.
Commissioner Davis, I mean, you know, it's important because, you know, the only way to delay getting EOIs is to delay having the board to get them forth, you know, that's an option. Yeah, there's obviously no doubt my resolve to get this citizen board constituted. I I think it's a wonderful achievement, but I don't want to be a cloud of suspicion over everything has gone perfectly so so far. I mean, why why taint it at the end? You know, the discussions, the disagreements, those were expected, those, that was great conversation. I just don't think it should have a an air of suspicion over it at the end.
And and Mayor Hoppick here, I don't disagree that the way that the additional announcement went out and the way that the EOIs showed the 4th doesn't create some cloud over the the appointment of the EO of the the board. I can't disagree with you there.
Plus, I just don't see us asking people to apply for something we have not officially created yet.
Well, we shouldn't have sent the EOIs out a month ago then.
I agree, that's why I voted not to do it. That was the very reason that I thought it was a bad idea to do it then. I agree with you 100%. And we have a commissioner didn't know if we if we didn't know it was January 4th, how we expect the public to know it's December 15th? But I agree, we should move the agenda on.
Okay, we need to, we have a public comment. I will ask Mr. Wood, any comments out there? Any individuals would like to comment? Again, if there are, please state your name and where you're from and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes.
I see a hand waving. I think it's Brian Fraser.
I have a Jay Blanchard.
Thank you, am I unmuted?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, um, Commissioners, John John Blanchard today. Um, sorry to be in front of Brian, I thought it was going to be after Brian Fraser, but I'm the treasurer of the local branch of the N O A C P. I know that there's extreme interest in this board and and you had made a comment in your last meeting that you wanted to go out of your way to make this board over representative of the community. It seems like this is a rushed job, it seems like a lot of the board members have probably been pre-collected, it seems like a couple of commissioners there have probably been in discussions about how to move this thing forward. And I think it's another example of how, when the city manager asked several years ago, how did we get here and why didn't we see this coming? I think when you have a city manager that goes rogue, which disappears to me because the mayor and all the other commissioners seem to act like, oh, he was just the only one that had anything to do with this thing, I think you lose trust in the community. This is a board where the police teams, police officers and the community have to be able to trust the process. Commissioner Hodges made a comment earlier about how you started this process with a public meeting at Kansas Westland. There has been a lot of disinformation and mistrust and just bad descriptions of people that think they know what this board is supposed to be. You've got people that are supporting things the way they are that don't even listen to the chief when he says we need to change people. I think you need to step back, don't rush this process, let the public know what a great thing you've done here and let them know exactly what's involved, how long they're going to be, how long they're going to be. I tried to get ahold of Mr. Francis, he didn't return on that one. And let the public know what's involved because there are a lot of people that want to be proactive and involved, but they want to know that it's just not a rigid system and that this is already predetermined. The entire board gets to vote on the mayor's decision. It isn't a railroad job. So, let the process play out, let the appointment deadline or EOI deadline be the fourth, and I would argue that might be a little silly. But if everything else is on the fourth, the commissioners get one package with all the board's questions, let that be a part of that package. And if you make the argument that it shouldn't be part of the package, that what you're saying is that it deserves special attention, would actually bet the fact that you need more time to review it, not less time. So, I thank you for your efforts so far. I think that the Kinnfar Coalition has done a great job, the chief has done a good job, the commission has done a good job. I think all of you just need to be proud of it, roll it out to the public and and really focus on getting a good, solid representation of the community and and build public trust. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. And Mayor Hoppick here, first of all, I would like, one thing I want people to know is the city manager did not go rogue on this. Again, he did the, he did this at my, with caught with direction from me. So, again, I don't want the city manager taking the blame for this being moved up. So, okay, do we have anyone else?
Brian Fraser has been wanting to comment, can we get him on?
I'm unmuted.
Yeah, there you go, Mr. Fraser. I I didn't see your physical hand, I was looking at the digital hands on the side. Sorry for missing you there.
Brian Fraser, Solana, Kansas. With hearing comments from the commissioners and and thinking about this myself, reading it on the Solana Post last night, I do want to thank the mayor and other commissioners for all the hard work they've done to try and get this going and getting it into place. I don't think it's something we need to rush. You don't want to take a Band-Aid when you really have a broken bone. I mean, you you know, you don't want to try and use a Band-Aid on a broken bone. And seeing some of the other boards that have been put together in the last five years, I think it's something that we do need to to make sure that we get right. And Mayor Hoppick, I hope that this works in a very positive way so that your legacy as mayor during this time can be that, yes, it was completed after I was out of office, but this is what I put together to help our city advance the communications and the the relationship between the police department and 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 the community and not do something that's hurried and is going to cause suspicion. I was very suspicious about it when I saw that the date was moved from January 4th to tomorrow because it's like, well, if you, and then knowing that you just decided on your your guidance last week, well, how can you rush a process this important to our And for people to respond in that short a period of time? Like I said, there's not very many meetings happening between now and the end of the year or the beginning of next year. Let's let people make comments to the commissioners, get ahold of the commissioners, let them read what all this is about. And and I know that it's been out there for a while, but I'm one of those individuals that's not very computer savvy. So, I'm one of the new folks on this Zoom meeting and always reason I was able to do was with a lot of assistance from other folks helping me get here because I'm used to, you know, in-person things and that's not happening and I understand that. But let's not rush this, let's let's make it right. Let's make the 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 fix that we're going to put on this wound a fix that's going to really get us healthier and not something that's just going to patch a hole that really needs surgery. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fraser, appreciate your comments. Mr. Wood, do we have anyone else?
I don't see any at this time, Mayor Hoppick.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Greg Bingston, legal counsel. On the far end of the spectrum as to the mundane, I do need to mention quickly that at about 3:45 this afternoon, I recognize that while in the text of the ordinance, we have referred to the body as the Law Enforcement Citizen Review Board. When that drafting occurred, it did not make the reference to law enforcement did not make its way to the title or the publication summary. I called Shandy, she has always responded quickly and assured me that the verse, I don't think it warrants amendment, it's just since it relates only to the title and the publication summary, but she was kind enough, the version you would have before you to sign will include that reference to law enforcement in both the title and the publication summary.
Okay, thank you.
I think the the question that we have to resolve first, and I I kind of hate to do this, but I suspect that the vote on the second reading may vary depending on how we deal with the deadline. So, I I I would hesitantly put out, put the feeler out there that we need to decide what to do about the deadline and the fact that it was confused with a publication that included it as a part of a group that probably shouldn't have.
Mike's here, if I may, that prior direction was provided by motion, so staff would appreciate it if you provide any additional direction by motion.
Commissioner Davis, I move that we extend the deadline for accepting of the EOIs for the Citizen Review Board to the previously stated January 4th.
Second. Commissioner Hodges.
We have a motion, a second, and I am going to make a comment. Mr. Scragg did put the deadline as tomorrow per our our discussion. I do believe that there has been a cloud put over this. The one thing I do not want to see is for this board to get off on the wrong foot due to the fact that it looks like we are pushing something through that should not be. I will take responsibility for the confusion and because of that, I will probably vote to move it to the 4th because I think there's, even though I think there's a lot of individuals that understand what this board is about have already applied, I believe there's been enough confusion that we probably should err on the side of caution.
Mike Scragg here, well, I appreciate the mayor's comments, staff also accepts responsibility in the confusion. We run in two processes at the same time and they got confused, you have my apologies.
Commissioner Davis, and I understand how that can happen, but I've actually had people call me and ask me, well, how do I get on, why is it so soon? And there are organizations in town who may wish to meet and and encourage one of their own members to to apply. We have, you know, segments of our community that we don't know that we've gotten the official version of this review board out to, and I I think it just looked, it looks cleaner.
And the and the comment I made to a comment made by a citizen the other day is, this is a board that is appointed by the mayor, whoever that should be, but again, it has to be approved by the commission, so.
True.
Move the question.
We have a, I guess we have a motion and a second, is, I'm going to look at Mr. Binkston, is it okay to go ahead and vote on the date for the EOIs to be due? It's not an item on the agenda, so I'm asking.
It would seem to me to be sufficiently related to enable you to address that question.
Okay. In that case, we have a motion and a second to move the EOIs for the Citizens Review Board to, is that January 4th, I believe?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
With that, we will have a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. Okay, thank you, and again, I apologize for the confusion and putting the board, the commission in the situation we did. That will move us to bring it back to the commission for approval of ordinance 20-11046 on second reading.
Commissioner Davis, I move approve approval of ordinance number 20-11046 on second reading.
Second.
And we have a motion, a second, we will have a roll call.
Just one question, it's a little question, item, I'm sorry, section 30-88. Is there any forethought on how the terms would be decided, who gets three, who gets two, who gets one year? Or is that just being left up to mayor's discretion?
That'll just be something we'll have to. That'll just be something we'll have to discuss. Yeah.
Mr. Binkston, you wanna take that one? You want me to?
Go ahead.
Well, yeah, I was gonna say that we made provision in the ordinance for that initial starting point to have a varied terms and then the actual terms that have to be assigned as part of the appointment process.
That's a to be determined when you get to it type issue?
Greg Binkston, legal counsel. My expectation would be that the mayor responsible for making those appointments would make that designation such that the governing body in the process of your consent to those appointments, if there are suggestions of modification, they could be made at that time.
Thank you.
And if, and if I could, Mayor Hoppick, I just, whenever it's appropriate, I would just like to note the reasons for my, the vote that I anticipate casting. So just let me know when that's, when it's appropriate.
Okay, that would be appropriate. I believe we have a first one.
Okay, just wanted to make-
About ready to vote, so.
I thought so. So I just wanted to make sure that nobody else had something to jump in on. First of all, I'm really grateful to my fellow commissioners, to members of the community, to law enforcement, to the previous law enforcement advisory board for the time that they've given this issue. And I think it is, it does represent an important step forward that brings us, it, it allows us, our already strong and very well-functioning police department to continue to not just rest on their laurels and just be satisfied with the job they're doing, but to push forward and to push to be better and to continue to exercise that, that, that desire and that willingness to get better. I hope that this board functions very well. I still have a couple of concerns that I brought up last week and ultimately they are just, to me, they run the risk of, of potentially compromising this ordinance. And that's related to section 30-83, the membership, having a member of the police department serving as a voting board member. And I don't know what the other section was, section 30-93 in terms of the board being able to have enough autonomy to conduct an executive session without the police chief's presence. And you know, it, I, it's gonna be a very reluctant no vote that, that I do cast and I do have hopes that that it will still be a very productive, relevant, transparent, trust-building board for the community and will serve us in years to come.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, we will have a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Nay.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. This is 4-1. Okay, that will lead us to item 7.5.
Item 7.5, resolution number 20-7911, amending fees and the 2021 comprehensive fee schedule related to the 21 feet.
Okay, Ms. Pack, there we are.
I'm here. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. The Fire Department of the City of Salina provides medical, emergency medical services. And after those services are provided, staff bills the patient's insurance company for those services. The amount billed for those specific services is set out in the city's comprehensive fee schedule. As you recall, we adopted our 2021 comprehensive fee schedule back on August 17, 2020. However, as time goes through, insurance agents review their, what they call their allowable rates, which is the dollar amount that they would consider full payment for particular services. And as they review those and periodically change those, staff will review those and make sure that the rate the city is charging is capturing the highest rate possible for the city of Salina. Based upon the most recent review of insurance-provided allowable rates, we, we are recommending changes to services in the comprehensive fee schedule for basic life support from 550 to 500. I'll explain that in a minute. Basic, um, basic life support emergency from 550 to 575. Advanced life support emergency, 650 to 725. Advanced life support non-emergency from 575 to 600. Advanced life support emergency from 775 to 800. Advanced life support specialty care transport from 900, a thousand, and a mileage allowed from $16 to $16.50 per mile. As noted in those table that I just read to you, the, the fee for basic life support non-emergency, which is A0, A0428, is going down. And that is because in the 2020 schedule, we erroneously entered that amount in the fee schedule at 550 and it was intended to be 475. Staff has been charging the intended fee of 475. Correcting the fee schedule to reflect the currently allowed rate would result in an increase from the intended fee to the current, the, the approved rate of $500. All of these proposed fee changes would take place on January 1st, 2021. From the fiscal note, the recommended rates will provide the city to bill the charges that are currently allowed by most major insurances. Commission action, Mr. Approve, your options are to approve resolution 20-7911 as proposed, amending the emergency medical services fees in the 2021 comprehensive fee schedule. Approve the resolution, making amendments as you deem appropriate, or postpone the resolution to a specific time and date, provide staff with direction as to additional information you'd like to see, or do not approve the resolution, moving amnesty fees as previously approved. Staff recommends option number one, and I would stand for it in question.
Commissioner Davis, one question. I understand the rationale behind raising the rates up to the allowable. You don't want to leave money on the table that you're legally and rightfully entitled to, to take. The only person that hurts is, is the cash-paying customer. What, what, what's the percentage or likelihood that you get uninsured actually paying those bills off? Does that happen very infrequently?
We do have some. I don't know what that percentage is off the top of my head, but I can certainly get that. But typically what, what we do, if there's a hardship or if they qualify for any assistance through the hospital, we accept that, that assistance. So if I'm a non-insured person and I go to the hospital and I say I'm non-insured, will you give me a break? If they, if they get that recommendation from the hospital, we too take that recommendation. So we do have some ability to help them in those cases. And usually it goes down to the Medicaid rate.
Thank you. It's nice knowing that. Appreciate that.
Mike's Craig here. You may recall as part of the EMS study, our consultant looked at our collection rate and, and acknowledged that we were above average in terms of our collections. He said that is a good thing, but I, I bring that up now just because we, I don't, I don't want to leave the impression that the only people that pay this rate are the insurance companies.
Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, Mr. Wood, do we have anybody with their hand up or anybody that would like to make a comment on this?
I don't see any at this time.
Okay, with that, I'll bring it back to the commission.
This is Carl Ryan.
Go ahead, Carl.
Mayor, I'd move we approve resolution 207911 as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will have a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. Okay, that passes 5-0. That will bring us to item 7.6. Everybody doing okay? We ready to keep on going?
Yes.
Yeah.
Item 7.6.
Item 7.6, resolution number 20-7906, operating the city manager to execute renewals of agreement to provide administrative services for a self-funded health benefit plan, an individual and aggregate stop loss with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas.
Hey, Ms. Fisher, are you on?
Yes, I am. Thank you, mayor and commissioners. As highlighted in the staff report, the City of Salina has opted to self-fund our health insurance program since 1997. This approach is rather than paying direct premiums to an insurance company, we have city contributions as well as employee withholding every pay period or payday. And we put those funds into a health fund and then pay any expenses, claims, administrative fees, and other related professional services.
Think.
Oops.
Fisher throws up on us. Mr. Wood, you know what happened? Ms. Fisher?
Better employment.
He's gonna have to rewind about a minute.
Jacob has his office next door to Natalie, so I think he's over there troubleshooting as we speak.
Well, something happened.
She's gonna come in on Jacob's. There you go. Unmute Jacob.
Gotta unmute. Jake, there we go. You there, Natalie?
Yes.
Okay, you wanna start over?
So the City of Salina's approach, just one minute.
I just wanna see if she says the same thing twice in a row.
Now I can, now you can see her on touchscreen.
Uh, I guess you gotta laugh about this stuff, guys.
That's why she went back, she's getting feedback.
Yeah.
You are right. The city has opted to self-fund our health insurance program since 1997. And by self-funding, this means rather than paying premiums directly to an insurance company, we take the, both the city contributions and the employee funds and put them into a health fund. And out of that fund, pay claims, admin fees, stop-loss rates, and any other professional-related services that we incur. In addition to our city employees, our plan does cover our subgroups, which would be the Airport Authority, the Housing Authority, the Public Library, and retirees under age 65 that elect our coverage as well as any Cobra participants. The insurance has three different areas of coverage, our health, prescription, and dental. For health, we contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas to be our third-party administrator for major medical or standard health insurance. Along with these admin fees, we also pay stop-loss. We are required by the state to carry stop-loss. We, we submit an application to the state to allow us to be a self-funded entity, and that is a requirement in order for them to allow us to do so. With the stop-loss, there's two different components. We have the individual stop-loss and the aggregate. Currently, the individual stop-loss covers exactly that in individual. And any times claims would exceed $150,000, every claim dollar beyond that would be covered by that stop-loss plan. As far as aggregate, this would look at our protection for our whole plan. So it would be what is referred to as an attachment point, which would be the number that Blue Cross provides to us as our expected claims and then calculates it at 130%. So that's significant because they calculate a number that they, they label as expected claims. And then 130% on top of that provides the, the attachment point. And we would have to have a lot of frequency or a lot of individuals with pretty high claims to hit that. Within the staff report, I also, I gave a, a table that provides history of what we've paid for both individual and then another table that looks at our history with the stop-loss for the aggregate. I did receive the report today for November. And just so you're updated, we currently have $2.25 million in claims 10 months into our plan year, applied toward us, uh, aggregate stop-loss of 5.03. So we're sitting really, really good there in terms of our claims dollars.
But as we previously noted, COVID has, can have quite an impact on our activity this year.
That is correct. We do anticipate that claims are down because of a lot of care that has been deferred or just not received due to the impacts of whether it's individuals just opting not to find that care or to, to go see their professionals to get the care or some facilities not taking individuals for elective-type procedures and care. See, in terms of how that stop-loss is determined, the actuaries that work for Blue Cross Blue Shield put this together with a formula. It's impact, it's impacted by looking at three years of our claims and our claims experience along with pools of similar, similar plans in Kansas. Switching a little bit to the other coverage that our plan provides, we also have dental and our third-party administrator is Delta Dental of Kansas. And prescription, our prescription benefit manager is Elixir, formerly known as MedTrak. We don't have specific stop-loss in place for either one of those coverages. By plan design, the dental is capped at $1,500 maximum benefit per individual that's covered by dental. So there is a sense of stop-loss. That is in addition to the unlimited options that we provided this year with an amendment. Just to recap, and you, sidebar, you will have the dental renewal for your consideration next week. But we opted to have unlimited clings and then also prevented preventative services for children under the age of 12. With prescription, the way that's structured, 30% is taken care of by the employee and 70% city, but there are no ceilings and there are no caps. So it's really hard to come up with the projection, but we do rely on trend and, and look at what our claims have been. Because of that risk, five years ago, we opted into an agreement with TRIA Health. And TRIA is a medication therapy management organization that we pay fees to, and their whole goal is to see what they can do in terms of reducing risk, improving health, and saving money for both our plan and our plan members. Their approach, they communicate with doctors, sometimes multiple doctors, sometimes multiple specialists geared at our high-risk members. And these would be individuals that have a lot of prescriptions or are also on their radar as having some chronic conditions. And it would be typically more than just a couple. They work with pharmacists and then they work with the employee or the dependents or spouse of the employees that are covered to help them manage the medication and make sure that the medication is doing what it needs to be doing, that there aren't lower costs available or other alternatives, or that there aren't prescriptions known to being prescribed by different doctors that possibly don't- that possibly don't play well together. Because the insurance world is just, seems to be always changing, a lot of regulations, a lot of different moving parts, and somewhat volatile in different areas, the city does get assistance from Charlesworth of Charlesworth and Associates. He does a number of different things on our behalf. He solicits proposals, he reviews and advises on any of our renewals, and when needed, he steps in and negotiates rates. He provided the study session on October twenty-sixth that, that gave a, an overview of our plan and how our renewals would be looking now for your consideration. And during that discussion, we also talked about some approaches to benefit fund management, but that will also be brought back to you at a later time for a future commission action. Back to the renewal that we are focused on today for, from Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas, it is seen as very favorable. The fees with the same coverage is what we had in the current or what we continue to have in the current plan year. It's going to save us based on like numbers in our census or the individuals enrolled in the program, about ninety-five thousand dollars, just under. Obviously, this will fluctuate depending on how many individuals, because that is a fee that's charged per member per month. And those are, again, the administrative fees and the stop-loss fees added together and then assessed on a monthly basis. And so, we were extremely happy to see that rate drop because that hasn't always been the case. And he also, Mr. Charlesworth also decided to solicit a renewal to find out how much it would cost us to pull our prescription coverage in under Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas to, so that we could have stop-loss coverage on the prescription. Again, there's currently nothing in place to cap those expenses for that benefit. We took a look at that, and in order to pull that in, it would increase our premium of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Now, again, that's gonna fluctuate depending on how many individuals that you're looking at. But using the same numbers that we did to calculate the renewal of saving just under ninety, ninety-five thousand, adding the, the stop-loss to the prescription and having Blue Cross administer our prescription coverage is going to increase that premium by a hundred and twenty-four thousand. During this study session, it was requested that he try to come up with exactly how would that work with our plan, with our current coverage, our current claims? And this proved to be a challenge. We were taking, or he was taking the data from two different companies and trying to provide some rough estimations. He did estimate three people would be over the stop-loss if he annualized the claims in the current year, and that would be a reimbursement of approximately seventy-four thousand dollars. During a conversation after he provided that information, we did talk about if looking at that data changed his recommendation for the city to move the stop-loss coverage or to add the stop-loss coverage to the prescription plan by moving the prescriptions under Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas, and he said it did not, largely because the prescription world is just a large unknown and costs aren't controlled very well at this point. The estimated renewal with Blue Cross, if renewing at our current benefits, is six hundred four thousand nine hundred ninety-seven dollars. Again, a fluctuation based on number of individuals, levels of enrollment are going to cause that number to not be exact. The, the big question that we need to determine is, does the city want to renew with the current benefits? Or do we wanna make the change and pull the prescription into the plan to gain that stop-loss coverage? While I started to pull a table together to provide with the blue sheet that really lays out current coverage versus the prescription and exactly the dollar amounts, it became pretty difficult because when I would plug in the aggregate stop-loss or a hundred and thirty percent of the expected claims for the current year or the current renewal, and then try to come up with what is comparable with TRIA, it was like I was working in two different areas. I was maxing out the claims in Blue Cross side and just trending on the prescription side. So, it didn't really work very well. And also, because we have not historically budgeted to that aggregate stop-loss level, we've relied more on trend. I opted to not include that, but I just wanted to, to kinda give an overview as to why. The, I, I did provide, again, the history on how our aggregate stop-loss has performed or how close we have come to that with our actual claims. And as a point of comparison, the reason we haven't, well, I, I believe it's twofold. The reason we haven't budgeted to that is because we currently typically don't receive our renewal until well after the budget's set. And which, which is one of the reasons that I also noted in the staff report. We were looking to change that to this next year be eleven-month benefit year and then move to a calendar benefit year the following year. But the other aspect of that is we don't typically get that close to those high-high claim numbers. So, it would be similar to, from a staffing perspective, how we don't budget all of our staff dollars as if we had every position filled for every pay period for the entire year. So, just a point of trying to come up with some dollars to put in front of you so that you're really looking at something comparable. In the event in the past, and I would say going forward, in the event that our trend is off or we haven't budgeted to the level that we needed to, to cover our expenses, that is where the reserve has kicked in, the reserve fund. So, there's been times where we've had to dip into that, and then there's been times where we've had in excess and we've replenished based on the performance of, of our claims and our administration fees and us budgeting higher than actual. So, that's a lot of information. I just hit the high points, and I know I didn't cover everything in the staff reports. But at this point, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I will also note that Charlesworth does appear to, to be on our meeting as well.
So, this is Mike's Craig. If I, if I may, I'd like to try to provide a little bit of a recap. Ms. Fisher or Mr. Charlesworth can correct me if I'm wrong. But we've gotten a favorable rating in terms of anticipated claims for the coming year. Don't entirely know what to attribute that to, partially, you know, obviously our actual experience, but part of that may be a deviation associated with our claims this year. But nonetheless, to maintain our current coverage levels, we could do so at a, at a savings of about ninety-five thousand dollars. Mr. Charlesworth has brought up the possibility or the concern that we have no stop-loss for prescription coverage, and that's a, you know, an unspecified risk that could be rolled in Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we could impose a stop-loss. That would add a cost of approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So, you've got that, those two numbers for comparison. And then in response to the, the question that came up previously, understandably trying to quantify what our, our prescription exposure is, while that is unpredictable, individual by individual, claim by claim, condition by condition, what Mr. Charlesworth was able to identify with the data he could get his hands on was a projection of about seventy-five thousand dollars. So, ninety-five thousand dollars of savings, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of added cost, and, and then the possible exposure of seventy-five thousand this year, not knowing what future years might bring in terms of prescriptions and prescription costs. So, it's very much about risk mitigation. That's what insurance is all about. And as Ms. Fisher mentioned, we have not historically budgeted to the, the anticipated claims provided by Blue Cross Blue Shield, we tried to manage the reserve balance. And that's the other conversation that we had in the study session was putting together a more formal way to manage our reserve balance over a number of years rather than have it fluctuate widely. So, and then the last thing I would say is, you know, part of that, that proposed approach is when we actually realize savings and we have a reserve balance in excess of our target balance, then we'd have the opportunity to have a rate holiday and realize savings to the city funds, the other participating agencies, and the employees themselves. So, you know, if we forego savings at the moment and we actually realize savings somewhere out in the future, we'd have the opportunity, if we take the approach that, that we discussed, of imposing a rate holiday somewhere out in the future.
Commissioner Davis, for the pharmacy stop-loss, I'm assuming the patients' out-of-pocket expenses, if, you know, if they get a five thousand dollar drug in January and they write a check to two thousand of that, they're done with their personal expenditures for the whole rest of the year, be it medical or pharmacy, or they, they're considered the same max out-of-pocket?
Um, so, with the plan that was proposed, the out-of-pocket that's combined with health and prescription, the out-of-pocket would be five thousand for an individual, ten thousand for a family.
I must have missed that one.
Well, it's, and I did not go into it in detail. It is up on attachment B with the benefit summary.
So, our employees individually have a five thousand dollar out-of-pocket?
If we move to that, so my understanding is with this plan, medical only is still two thousand, four thousand. Medical combined with prescription would move to five thousand, ten thousand. That is actually slightly lower than present. And I have this pulled up on my computer. If you give me a minute.
Have a pharmacy maximum out-of-pocket today right now?
Yes, let me grab that now, and I just wanted to clarify too. The, the out-of-pockets that are established by our third-party administrators and the plans that they administer for us are governed by the Affordable Care Act, and they, but they are slightly lower than that to ensure that we comply. I can, it, it is, I can, if you give me just a second, I can go get the information that was pulled up.
Are we paying folks that much? So, out of money.
So, the question is, what's the combined exposure with the existing plan to make a comparison?
Correct.
Okay, so currently, with our current plan, an individual, because it is separated, would either have an out-of-pocket of six thousand one hundred fifty dollars for prescription if they hit already their two thousand dollar medical, or combined, it's eighty-one fifty.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hodges here. So, a single employee's maximum out-of-pocket would be eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars?
Correct.
That's, that's a maximum on both plans. Now, that, that would be each individual. So, if you had a family of five, it could be, or is that each policy?
So, that's individual only. So, if, if you look to family, which would be whether it's two individuals or twelve individuals, the prescription by itself, assuming the out-of-pocket with the medical, I know, it's confusing because we have coordinating benefits, twelve thousand three hundred.
And their out-of-pocket medical maximum is four thousand?
Right, so combined, or I should back up and say, if they didn't have the medical side incurred and it was, say, prescription only, the maximum out-of-pocket for a family, again, whether that's two people or twelve, however many people they have on their plan, would be sixteen thousand three hundred.
Sixteen?
Prescription only.
Well, and the reason I'm asking is I treat multiple sclerosis. You know, if, if the drugs work well when I do my job, they may only have to come into the office two or three times a year and get some blood test. They're not gonna reach the four thousand medical. But the drug is seven thousand dollars a month. So, they're gonna, without the medical being met, they could pay twelve thousand plus out-of-pocket just for the drug. Do we give a pay raise?
Now, I will say, but that, that would be for a family, and, and that scenario, it would drop back to individual coverage of.
Sixty-one hundred.
Yeah, sixty-one fifty or eighty-one fifty.
Right.
And there is a slight increase when moving to the twenty-twenty-one plan year.
Well, that'll beat your expenses down. Nobody wants to go to the doctor for fear they'll get a prescription.
So, and, and I'll just give you those figures really quick. So, those are jumping a little bit. For twenty-twenty-one, eight thousand five fifty for an individual versus it was eighty-one fifty, or seventeen thousand one hundred for family. Up from sixteen thousand three hundred.
Those are mind-numbing numbers.
Just need to avoid getting sick with something that requires an expensive drug, I guess.
You ain't, well, you ain't, it certainly underscores the value of having the pharmacy management company that can call the doctor and say, hey, you know, yeah, this drug's got a great commercial, but is it really any better for this than the drug that's been here? Now, TRIA was, was doing that. Would, would the plan we have for next year have that same service? That, that, that sort of that, that adjuvant for the, for the.
So, you will also be considering a TRIA renewal very soon. And yes, we verified that TRIA could work with either prescription benefit manager.
I, I think that becomes very important because a lot of patients aren't gonna have the savvy or the nerve to ask the doctor, uh, could you give me a cheaper one? Or do I have options? I mean, it's nice to have, to have an advocate fighting for me. Or, or someone who, who may know where, they may have to get that drug to get it at a lower price.
And TRIA provide, this is Mike's Craig. TRIA provides us with monthly statements of savings realized, and they're significant.
I think that becomes.
It's noticeable.
Imperable, imperative.
Now, I will add that while I don't have a report to provide you and I don't have proof of how many times it's happened, we have had employees share with us when they end up in that very expensive drug cycle that some of the companies, recognizing how financially difficult it could be, will sometimes work with them and come up with some discounts for the individuals themselves, knowing that they can still bill insurance. But it's, it's definitely not a guarantee. But it's, it's definitely not a guarantee or a given.
I feel suddenly depressed. Yeah.
But then correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Fisher, but this is in keeping with the Affordable Care Act. I mean, and while we're talking about the numbers that you're, you're asking about, and we're providing our current coverage numbers, we, we've not brought forward a revised plan for your consideration with, you know, different coverage amounts and, and that, we don't have those numbers. What we have is renewal of our current plan and the possibility of stop loss on the part of us as a self insured employer, um, if we were to roll prescription coverage into Blue Cross Blue Shield stop loss.
Which if I understand it, is Commissioner Davis, if I understand it correctly, from your calculations or our recent experiences, we don't have enough people with a large enough pharmacy bills to justify the pharmacy stop loss coverage.
Uh, Mr. Charles, yeah, Mr. Charles Wirth is on the line and he's muted at the moment. Yeah, I think he'd probably be best to speak to that. But given the data that we have and the experience that we looked at for a limited amount of time and then projecting that, annualizing that, it didn't, it looked like 75,000 compared to 124,000 dollars of cost. But that's, that's not a ironclad indicator of what we can expect in the future either.
Mayor Hoppe here. Did we just look at that for one year? Did we go back and look at that for a couple of years to see if that would be, would have been the case?
Yeah. Mr. Charlesworth, are you picking up the question and are you able to respond?
Yes, this is Bob Charlesworth. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, down the back one year, uh, we do monitor this annually. Uh, as an FYI, you've had two, uh, members, I don't know if they're employees or dependents, I don't know, uh, that did need $6,150 out of pocket costs, uh, another one at 800. Um, and so if, when I look at the entire, what the plan paid, which is the city, um, and then I was able to roll in what I could find on the medical, again, based on my projections, about 74, 76,000 dollars would have been reimbursed on the pharmacy side, uh, as we currently sit as a city. Now, I, I want to be very clear here. The out of pockets that Natalie had talked about are correct. There's a medical component and a pharmacy component, and that would still apply if you combined them. However, the combined program does slightly modify the pharmacy benefit plan. If you look at the option one, which is, uh, on the information that was provided, uh, the commissioners, it shows the share pay is still the $2,000 deductible individual or 1,000 for a family. That's on the medical and physician side. The, the pharmacy card is still the same co insurance, 30% by the member, 70% by the city, i.e. through Blue Cross of Kansas. But if you look at it, it says the mandatory is, it's got a pharmacy program, but it's got a, has a combined health and pharmacy annual out of pocket of 5,000, 10,000. That's much lower than what it is currently. So it doesn't exactly mirror where they're at today versus what the cost is often. It's actually a little bit better, lower out of pocket for the members than they currently would see. That does have an impact a little bit on the pricing. So I just want to be clear that it's not an exact pharmacy comparison of out of pocket to the member. It's actually better under the Blue Cross plan. Uh, let me touch base while I didn't go back more than one year. When we look at our, the city's claims, we haven't seen a lot of large claims. Um, and then we combine that, you know, could they have been on the medical stop loss? The city hasn't had a lot of, uh, individuals that have hit their stop loss. Uh, Natalie mentioned, uh, we just got a report today, uh, for November. There still has been nobody, nobody hit the medical stop loss this year since Jan., uh, that would be since February 1st. Uh, let's knock on wood. That's great news. Um, but if we would have rolled the RX in for the current year, the city would have already received about, uh, collectively about 74,000 dollars back. So it's a, it's an expense of 124,000 for protection for the city to stop it, uh, within that 150,000 dollar level that you don't currently have today.
This is one of those where Mayor Hoppe here, hindsight's 2020.
I will, I will say this, uh, this is Bob Charlesworth again. Um, the incumbent administrator of the pharmacy program for the city, uh, Metrak, which is now under the name Elixir, has been, um, exceptional. I think they do a, a very good job. Um, they manage it, uh, they provide both Natalie and myself notification, uh, of when a large cost drug is being administered. Uh, they do manage that and with TRIO's help, and yes, TRIO does work with, um, Elixir and they also work with Blue Cross of Kansas. I know that for a fact. Um, that's a huge component of the success, I think, of the city and a great benefit to the member. So I know that's another discussion later, uh, for Natalie's comment. But, you know, it's, it's expensive. A lot of money to spend for protection. But right now, currently, the city doesn't have that protection and the city's accepted that risk, uh, so far today. Uh, we've talked about this before. This is not the first time ever it's been brought up. Um, but again, cost of drugs going forward, some of the claims today, um, I'm not a fan of giving insurance companies money, uh, but I also recognize risk assumption and risk transfer. So that's why I think brought to you tonight.
Commissioner Davis, does Metrak get involved before the expensive prescription is first filled or only after they've received that first high charge?
It would be the first time they get the first charge because they won't know it otherwise. Uh, but they do, uh, an evaluation process before it's released. So it's very rare for a member to go to a pharmacy, uh, ask for a prescription, uh, and not have to go through a specialty provider that's been underwritten and evaluated with a physician and a pharmacist.
Thank you.
So Mike's Craig here. Mr. Charlesworth, just to recap, uh, adding cost of 125,000 would have paid out 75,000. So essentially a net cost of 50,000 and.
With several months still to go.
And, and coverage, uh, limits actually going down for employees.
That would be correct, that'd be a correct assumption. That's correct.
Which option is that?
That's option number two in the staff report.
That's what I thought. It's one to make sure, uh, fresh and.
And so just to make sure, Commissioner Hodges here, just to make sure that the option that results in the lowest out of pocket expense for employees is one or two? I was understanding it is number one.
It would be number two.
Number two. Okay.
Yes, moving the prescription coverage to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas does put lower limits on the out of pocket.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, not to, not to cause confusion or muddy the waters, but I'm gonna, uh, turn to Mr. Charlesworth. If the city wanted to come up with a number well below the Affordable Care Act, uh, out of pocket maximums with Elixir, would we have the ability to make that plan amendment?
Oh, I think absolutely you could. It's your plan. Uh, they just can't go over it. The city, you know, as the employer cannot go over the, the maximum as outlined by the Affordable Care Act, which does, you're right, it changes every year slightly. But you can modify that down.
At the appropriate premium change.
Yes.
Well, I just mentioned that we very, the city already has two max and one close to it. So, um, there would be some risk transfer, Commissioner Franz, that's correct. The transfer would be between the member and the city.
Are we talking about reducing the 125,000 dollar max? Is that the topic of the discussion? Or is the topic the maximum out of pocket that an employee would pay?
That's, Commissioner Hodges, that's what I'm interested in. I know that we are well overdue for a payroll study and one of the things that, you know, we've, we've talked about is how do we get, um, you know, our pay scale in better alignment to, to attract and keep, um, good employees? And I just feel like, you know, any benefit that we can offer, um, that, that, that helps them, you know, not separate from, from the city. And I'm just listening to some of these, um, out of pocket amounts and I think they're, I mean, they're frightening to me, especially when you look at the vast majority of where, where our employees are on, you know, the, the pay scale. So I, I'd love to see us, if there's a way, reduce the, um, out, or lower the out of pocket limit as we can.
And under the option one, what was the out of pocket again? Was it five and 10?
Four. Okay, so this caused confusion initially. Option one, which is labeled as Attachment B.
Right. I've got that open, right.
That is the change. That is the change that results in an additional 124,000 dollar in premium because we moved prescription coverage to Blue Cross and add the stop loss.
Right.
That does result in a slightly lower maximum out of pocket of 5,000 and 10,000.
5,000 individual, 10,000 family.
Right. That's either all RX or combined health in RX.
Which is, well, that's considerably less than the 16, yeah.
Yeah.
Plus that, Commissioner Davis, that, that, the, the savings that the employee is gonna realize is the out of pocket expense generally out of sight, out of mind, the money that never gets on people's learn to live without. It's the after tax money in the pocket they have to then spend at the pharmacy that they're gonna really keep track of. And I, I think if, if, if we can help them out on that end, um, over the course of 12 months, they'll probably have a few extra dollars in the pocket. I mean, if they, if it's been a bad year for them health wise, then, uh, it would cost us a little bit more, but I think we'd be helping a greater number of employees potentially. We hope none of them get that sick, but, but, yeah.
Mayor Hoppe here, Commissioner Franz, Commissioner Ryan, what are your thoughts?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm interested in what benefits the employee the most, the lower deductibles they're feeling to me.
I just wanted to thank the staff for providing some additional information. That was very helpful and I'm fairly well content with where we are. Um, the, um, yeah, I was a little, I didn't pay much attention to the out of pockets on the, on the options and I'm a little bit shocked that prescriptions are that high. Um, but I also know if we try to lower them, that we've got to pay the piper, piper at the front end. You know, I, I have to wonder, um, how many employees hit that, hit that limit? I mean, I, I just can't imagine that it's a huge number to get to 5,000, 10,000 or, or, you know, whatever that, that number is. That's a, a lot of money for the, what, the 30% portion? Isn't that what they pay out of pockets? 30%, so they would have to get to, to get to 5,000 out of pocket, they would have to spend 15,000 on prescriptions in a year. And, you know, I, I know that with, with some drugs, that's probably easy to do. I just don't know how many people are in the case in where they are, uh, having to take medication that is that costly.
Mayor Hoppe here, isn't the 5,000 both health and RX?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, or it could be all RX if they didn't.
Either or, a combination of one of them.
It ma, it makes it hard to, to assess this because it's, you know, but I, I do have one question relating to the numbers you're quoting us, 125,000 difference, uh, is the difference in the, um, administration fees and stop loss? That has nothing to do with claims or anything like that. It is purely the administrative fees and stop loss.
Correct. Yes. When you look at the administration and stop loss table, it was purely the difference between the last two options, current plan or the renewal at, in 2021 with prescription coverage.
Yeah. Now, I, I would note that on those renewal sheets, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield has, uh, used a census, I believe, of 474 employees for the plan with a particular, you know, distribution by type. Does that 474, I mean, what, where, where does that number come from? Is that this month's number or is it kind of a generic, we think this is kind of what reflects the plan throughout the year?
I believe at the time that they generated the renewal document, that that was our census.
Okay. So is that higher or low in comparison to where we typically might run? The reason I ask that is that that can make a pretty significant difference if they happen to pick a month where we were at the very low end for the year. And if that fluctuation is 100 plans, that changes that proposed renewal in dollar amounts that we're thinking about quite significantly.
Yeah, that is not too far off of what we've trended with our census. And the reason that I didn't use our December one, um, census to run updates is because we are very low right now.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, and that's fine. I understand it goes up and down a lot. I just wanted to make sure that 474 was, you know, somewhere in the mid range, uh, so that it could be relied on to have a reasonably decent number for projection of, of the stop loss expense since that's set solely by numbers.
Yeah. If it is low, it's, I mean, I, I believe I did a comparison when we were , um, prepping for the study session back in October, and it might've been off by like only eight employees versus now. When I look back to what kind of, um, census level we had in February of this year, we're, I, I want to say maybe 14 families different. I mean, it's, it's substantial why I didn't use our numbers as of right now.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that the numbers we're talking here makes sense in terms of the census and that it's, you know, it's, it's something that is, at least in this industry, is reasonably reliable as a cost. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Hoppe here. Any other questions or comments?
Mike's Craig here. I think Mr. Charlesworth and I may have misspoke. Just to be clear, option number one is, adds the stop loss for, uh, prescription and lowers the, um, out of pockets for employees?
So I want to, just to make sure we're talking about the same thing. If we are talking about the options presented in the staff report, option one, option two, um.
Is it option, or is it option, we have option A on both. Is it renewal benefits or is it the option one?
So I'm gonna direct you to the upper right hand corner.
Yes, that's what I'm.
Attachment B.
Attachment B, that's right.
Attachment B is option two on your staff report. That's the recommendation at this point.
Yes. Which would be number two recommendation under action, correct?
Correct.
Right. Okay. Right, okay.
And that's, and that's the one that re, resort.
Lower the deductibles.
Lower out of pocket of two thousand and four thousand?
Lower out of pocket to two thousand, four thousand, five thousand, and ten thousand aggregate, and then, uh, puts the hundred and twenty-four thousand stop loss, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, just real quick though, it doesn't, it's not lowering the two thousand and four thousand on the health side. That's already in play.
Right.
It's just the prescription side of that.
Correct.
Yeah, so five and ten.
Five and ten, right.
Well, that's combined, that's RX is five and ten.
Yes.
I can't imagine we have anybody wanting to call in on this, but. Because we have some employees with a comment.
He said he does not see any.
Okay. Okay. Looking at this once a year, I know, Mayor Hoppick here, it does get very confusing, not only when we're trying to look at benefits, but then we're also trying to look at the revenues versus the expenses. It's a, we, uh, have to weigh heavily, you know, lean heavily on staff and Mr. Charlesworth for, for input, I think, so. Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hoppick, Commissioner Davis here. We approve resolution number twenty dash seven nine zero six, authorizing the city manager to execute agreement to provide administrative services for a self-funded health benefit plan and individual and aggregate stop loss with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas with the fifty-fifty cost share plan structure and adding prescription benefit management with prime therapeutics.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
Hey, we have a motion and second to approve resolution number two zero dash seven nine zero six. And that would be adding the prescription, uh, benefit management. Okay, we will have a roll call.
Okay, short question. When we add Tria, that, that's a totally separate action on a different day, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're ready for roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye.
Okay, that passes five zero. Okay, that leads us to seven point seven.
Item seven point seven, resolution number two zero dash seven nine one nine, amending the city of Salina personnel manual.
Thank you again, mayor and commissioners. Um, before you, are two areas of the personnel manual that we are requesting to revise. Um, a little bit about the process prior to you receiving these. When staff identifies areas of revision, uh, conversations both at the management level and employee level are held. Um, these were run by employee council with, um, requested feedback. And, uh, to date, only support was given for, uh, both sets of revisions. Executive staff and management also said these revisions made sense, uh, to them as well. The first area is Article ten, compensation and benefits. What we are requesting is the ability to remove the performance evaluation component from the, uh, longevity pay qualifier. At the time that this was amended, um, and I didn't pull up the exact date of when that happened, but it was several years ago and the thought process was, uh, the commission didn't want to reward poor performance by awarding individuals longevity. And while that is completely understandable, um, some research into the Fair Labor Standards Act, as well as some recent inquiries on the caper side of things, has, um, led us to identify some concerns that if we're going to have longevity and ensure it is not a bonus that potentially, um, needs to be included into computations of overtime, which become extremely hairy, from the, the payroll point of view. Um, we believe that the, uh, longevity portion just needs to be removed altogether. Or, or the, the performance evaluation ties to longevity needs to be removed altogether. And we make it, if longevity is purely longevity, rewarding the, the service. In addition to the compensation and benefits, we took a look at vacation. And, um, now that we are in a different payroll system than what we previously were, where we can export data a little quicker and, uh, manage to that. Um, staff identified an area that we believe could really help employees. And this is the area where employees forfeit the amount of their vacation that is over a cap. And again, this is assuming that there, there's two different components on the vacation, within the, the requirements for the vacation policy. Number one, that they have to use fifty percent of whatever the accrual for that year is. And number two, that they have to manage that amount to their cap. And what we're proposing is to, uh, leave only them to worry about making sure they use fifty percent and letting HR manage to their cap. The benefit is obviously the employee won't be losing the hours, that is their benefit. But also from an HR standpoint, and my staff, we spend a lot of time. It's almost like a case management situation, walking individuals through their, their amounts, their, uh, percentage of what they've used, um, helping them plan if they plan on using anymore before the end of the year, and then trying to calculate that and add in their accruals. And we just identified this, if we can just take care of it, we reduce the foot traffic in HR, especially in times of COVID, we reduce a lot of paperwork, and we reduce a lot of phone calls, um, and inquiries when we think we can just manage it more efficiently by just letting us do it. So in a nutshell, that's, that are, those are the two areas that the revised, um, articles have, um, accomplished. I did provide just a little bit of history on a fiscal note. And it, it just summarizes how many hours have been lost over the last three years. We seem to be trending up, and that was a concern as well. I, I wanna back up, the one element that I forgot to mention on longevity is to eliminate the payouts for individuals that are leaving us and going to other employers. It seems counterintuitive to provide a retention bonus to individuals that are leaving our employment. And we summarize, uh, the amounts paid out. Um, these would be non-retirees because what, we aren't proposing that those retiring, because they qualify at different quarters, that they should be penalized and not get the amount that if they qualified for retirement all at the same time. So it would just be removing those payouts only for the individuals that are leaving our employment but are not retiring. So, um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or try to provide you, um, any other information.
Mike's Craig here, Ms. Fisher, if you would, when you say let HR do it, could you please explain what that means in terms of what HR would be doing in terms of managing employees' caps for them?
Sure, after we, uh, calculate payroll in, after the beginning of the year, whichever the first payroll in, um, for example, this January would be, we would run the numbers to see where they were at with the fifty percent, to see if there were any vacation amounts lost because of not meeting the required usage. And then after those adjustments, um, then in a separate payroll, we would be running to pay out any amounts over the caps. So we have about, I'm gonna ballpark right now, maybe eighteen individuals, and that might even be a little bit high, that have, um, grandfather caps. When we capped vacation accrual balances, they were granted whatever their amounts were. So we have those individuals that have their grandfather amount, and then everyone else would either be two hundred and fifty hours or for our shift firefighters, three hundred and fifty hours. So anyone that would have balances above those three areas, two hundred and fifty hours, three hundred and fifty hours of their grandfather caps, we would just automatically pay them out to get their amounts down to the requirement. So they would no longer forfeit it.
So, so if I understand it, if somebody has a grandfather cap, they could keep that, that you wouldn't pay down to the two fifty or five hundred?
Exactly.
Okay.
We, but.
And, and it's my understanding, just from looking at this, is we have a number of people every year basically lose vacation and don't get paid for it because they don't come in and ask.
Yes, or maybe they ask and then they forget.
Okay.
Or they worry just about how much vacation they have to use, and then they don't look at their pay stubs or, or ask, and then they fail to submit a buyback form.
And three months later, when they figure it out, they're upset.
Oh, it's much quicker because I notify them when they do the adjustments, and then they have the option to appeal any loss.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Hey, any other questions or comments from the commission? Mr. Wood, is there anybody on the line that would like to comment?
I'm getting a head nod, no.
Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission.
Uh, Mayor Hoppick, I would move that we approve resolution number two zero seven nine one nine, adopting the proposed changes to the city of Salina personnel manual.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have a motion and second to approve resolution number two zero dash seven nine one nine. We will have a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye.
I should apologize, that was Commissioner Franz on the motion. I'm as, as bad as Commissioner Hodges, I'm forgetting to say that, so.
Okay, that will lead us to item eight point one.
Item eight point one, resolution number two zero dash seven nine one eight, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated small cell master license agreement with U.S. C O C, Nebraska, Kansas, LLC.
Mr. Andrew, you've been waiting patiently in the wings, I believe, are you there?
He is, but he's muted.
Heck, he is.
There he is. Okay, looks like I've been unmuted.
There you go, Mr. Andrew.
Um, just by, by way of background, um, the city of Salina has one franchise agreement with a small cell infrastructure installer, which at the time was Ideatech and is now Zayo. So there's, there's about thirty-plus small cell installations in the community today. The Kansas legislature passed legislation that prohibited cities from requiring franchise agreements for small cell wireless facility providers, but do allow for what's referred to as a small cell master license agreement with those providers wanting to install small cell wireless networks in the public right-of-way. And we have U.S. Cellular that's interested in, in rolling out 5G service in the city of Salina and installing their own small cell network. Um, preliminarily, we've looked at between twenty and thirty locations for locating small cell facilities in the public right-of-way throughout the city. They requested approval of a small cell license agreement. Uh, one was prepared, and on August third, the city commission considered that license agreement. And after staff presented its report, the commissioners expressed concern in looking at the agreement that it appeared to lock the city in at charging two hundred and seventy dollars per attachment for the entire twenty-five-year life of the agreement. Um, right now, the Federal Communications Commission currently limits the maximum rent amount to two hundred and seventy dollars. But the city commission wanted to address that in case the FCC would change that guidance. In other words, not being locked into that for twenty-five years. So the commission voted to authorize the mayor to execute a small cell master license agreement with U.S. C O C, Nebraska, Kansas LLC, with language being amended to allow the city to charge a fee, the maximum amount allowed by federal law. So in response to that direction, the city's legal counsel, Aaron Martin, amended the language, then shared that language with, um, U.S. Cellular's legal counsel. They responded with comments and requests for, uh, modifications to the city's language plus additional modifications to the agreement. And the primary concern was that it was open-ended and it allowed the city to unilaterally increase the rent amount beyond the two hundred and seventy-five dollars per year without any limitation. So there were additional con, conversations with U.S. Cellular, and it resulted in some compromised language. And that enables the city to increase the rent amount if the applicable federal law allows, but subject to the condition that the rent will not increase by an amount that exceeds the three percent annual inflator or, um, and so that provides some certainty, the maximum amount that that can go up. And the sections in five, B, and C were also modified to require that any future increases in those amounts would be negotiated between the city and, and U.S. Cellular. And the third change they requested was in section eight point eight that deals with what happens if the agreement is terminated and U.S. Cellular has to remove their equipment from the right-of-way. They asked that they be, the, uh, removal period be increased from sixty to ninety days. So these changes have all been incorporated into an amended agreement that's attached to your report. Um, due to the fact that these are substantive changes, this was brought back to you for the city commission's review and approval. And so this is coming back as an amended agreement. So in terms of the fiscal note or fiscal impact, um, the city would have three forms of compensation for use of its public right-of-way. If there was an attachment to an existing city-owned light pole or traffic pole, then U.S. Cellular would have to pay the city two hundred and seventy dollars for each of those attachments as rent annually. If they go out and place their own pole in the city's right-of-way, then they're, they have to pay a pole license fee. The fiscal note mischaracterizes that as a hundred dollars annually. It's actually a hundred and twenty-five dollars annually. And then if they have ground-mounted boxes associated with that, there's a hundred dollar annual fee associated for that as a ground space fee. So the, the primary changes are that there's an allowance to increase the two hundred and seventy, uh, dollar fee, but that has to be negotiated with U.S. Cellular. And then any increases in the pole license fee or the ground space fee would also have to be negotiated. And the removal time period, they're requesting be increased from sixty to ninety days. So your options this evening would be to execute an amended version of that small cell license agreement first considered in August, allow the installation of small cell wireless facility network in the public right-of-way. You could postpone consideration of this, uh, amended agreement to a future meeting date to allow staff or the applicant to provide additional information. Or you could decline to approve the proposed changes and provide additional direction to staff.
Okay, Mayor Hoppick here, any questions, comments for staff?
I do believe we have Anna, um, a legal counsel for U.S. C O C, who does appear to be, um, present. So if you have any questions for her, or she may have some comments of her own.
Hear no questions or comments from the commission, I guess I. I guess I will ask Anna if she has any comments.
Now you're unmuted.
Am I unmuted now?
Yeah, you are now.
Hello, hi, thank you, City Commission, and thank you, Mr. Andrew. So we, I want to make sure that it's clear that we're not opposed to paying the, a higher fee. We just want to make sure that we're not, the way that it was drafted, we're not paying, we're not essentially writing a blank check. So we just wanted some safeguards.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we, I'm just, I'm sure there's a lot of people still out there, Mr. Wood, just wanting to in-reen to comment on this, or am I wrong?
I don't see anybody.
Yeah, I figured. Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the Commission for action.
Mayor Hoppick, I would move that we approve Resolution 20-7908, authorizing the mayor to execute an amended version of the small cell master license agreement with US COC Nebraska/Kansas LLC. And to thank Ms., and I apologize, I'm probably going to mess up your last name, Ms. Rouge Rodela's patience in this matter.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 20-7908. We will have a roll call.
I will correct first that the resolution number on the blue sheet is incorrect. It's 7918.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, because on the back page for Commission, actually it just has 20 dash, so 79...
Mine doesn't have a number at all.
It does on the front page, but not on the...
Okay.
Okay, that's Resolution 20-7918. Now we can have a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye.
Okay, that passes 5-0. That will bring us to Other Business. Do we have anything else to bring before the Commission?
Well, other than the official of the business.
What's that?
All right. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I've moved the City Commission recess into executive session for an unknown number of minutes.
Let's try, let's try 20 minutes.
All right, thank you.
Can we take a five-minute break also?
We can do that. And we recessed into executive session for 20 minutes after a five-minute recess to discuss the subject of legal considerations related to the city's obligation to fund the 2020 Transportation Services Grant under the city's agreement with OCCK for funding public transportation services with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-4319V2. The open meeting will resume in this room at, well, it takes six and a half minutes for the break at nine o'clock.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
We have a motion to second to move into executive session and return at nine. Mr. Wood, how are we going to handle this again?
Okay, I have set up a break room. I will send an invitation here in about five minutes and you will all have a, be prompted to enter the room. And the regular meeting will continue to go live. And then we'll come back into the regular meeting when that's done, so.
Okay, see everyone back here in five minutes. Session, we do need some additional time. I would take a motion to move back into executive session.
Mayor, move the City Commission recess again into executive session for an additional 15 minutes for the same subject of legal considerations that were read when we just went into executive session 30 minutes ago. If that's complete enough.
Is that sufficient enough, Mr. Binkston?
You want more detail?
We need to go through the motion.
Go through the whole motion, that's what I thought, sorry.
All right. All right, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss the subject of legal considerations related to the city's obligation to fund the 2020 Transportation Services Grant under the city's agreement with OCCK for funding public transportation services with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-4319V2. The open meeting will resume in...
9:20.
At 9:20.
Second?
You have a second? Got a motion to second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, okay. We'll wait for our...
(cough)
Bless you.
Yeah.
Do we have everybody back?
I'm back, I hope.
Let's see, well, there, everybody's unmuted, okay. We're back in session. There is no action to be taken at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I don't need long discussion, but just two items that we have not addressed yet before the end of the calendar year. Our City Manager's Annual Review. And at some point, I don't know how you do it, but the City Commission may, if we have no other employees who aren't getting full salary back, look into re-establishing City Commission pay or token. I won't call it paid.
No.
If we have an employee who's still down because of staffing reduction, then, you know, I'll forego mine. But if we are truly caught up, then I think would be appropriate.
Yeah, I think, I think we're back to normal in that regard. So we could certainly do that. And the other one's not lost on me. The mayor and I've talked about it and told him I'd try to find him a review format, possibly from International City Managers Association, that might be a template for you to work from.
Yeah, we do need to do that, so, okay.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate those. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second.
Okay, I'm not going to do a roll call on this because I think I know how this is going to go. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Closed? Okay, we will see everyone next Monday. Stay safe out there, guys.
Have a good week.
Thanks.